And I will make one more announcement. If you intend to speak at the public forum or to an agenda item, your speaker form must be turned in prior to the adoption of the agenda.
Okay, when do you want to get her?
Once again, if you want to fill out a speaker's form, it has to be turned in prior to the adoption of the agenda. After the agenda is adopted, there will be no more speaker forms accepted. And we are ready. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and I welcome you as I call to order the May 2023 meeting of the Escambia County School Board. Whether you are joining us via our live stream or in the audience, we appreciate your interest in the education of the students of Escambia County. I ask that you silence your cell phones at this time. I remind you that if you wish to speak to either an agenda item or at the public hearing for policy changes or at the public forum, you must complete a speaker request form found on the table at the rear of the room and bring it forward to Ms. Dwelly or to Ms. Harris at the front table. On the form, please be sure to indicate whether your intention is to speak at the public forum or to a specific item on tonight's agenda. It's the board's practice to pull items from the consent agenda when someone asks to speak to them. The consent agenda items include curriculum and instruction, finance, human resources, and operations. You must submit your speaker form prior to the approval of the consent agenda. This meeting was properly advertised in the Pensacola News Journal on May 1st, legal notice number 5667689. It is the tradition of the Escambia County School Board to begin our meeting with an invocation or a motivational moment followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. This month I will lead. If you will please stand with me, take a moment of silence, especially for our students who have worked so hard during this testing period, what it means for them and their futures, and what it means for the betterment of our school district in terms of showing our students progress. I'll be quiet and let you have a moment of silence. Thank you. If you'll join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, we will move to the adoption of the agenda. Mr. Superintendent, are there any additions or deletions to your recommended agenda?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have a number this evening. Under Section 3, Minutes, Item F, Delete. Those are minutes from April 18, 2023 organizational meeting on the leasing corporation. Under Section 4, Unfinished Business, Item A is added, performance-based charter agreement between the School Board of Escambia County, Florida and Renaissance Charter School Incorporated. Item B is added, lease agreement between the School Board of Escambia County, Florida and Renaissance Charter School Incorporated. Item C is added, Revised Turnaround Option Plan, Step 2. Item D, added, School Attendance Zone Advisory Committee, often referred to as CAC, Emergency Option of Attendance Zones for Staffing Purposes at Workman and Bailey Middle Schools. Under Section 6, Proposed Additions or Revisions to School District Rules, First Reading. Item A is deleted, modifications, changes, and/or deletions of school attendance zone boundaries. Item B is added, modifications, changes, and/or deletions of school attendance zone boundaries. Under Section 8, Consent, Curriculum, Alternative Education, Item B is deleted, Third Amendment to the Contract for Educational Services between the School Board of Escambia County, Florida and Specialized Education Services Incorporated, a successor to Interest to Camelot Schools of Florida. Under Section 20, Consent Finance, Item E is deleted, 2023-24 Instructional Salary Schedules. Item F is added, 2023-24 Instructional Salary Schedules. Under Section 24, Consent Finance Purchasing, Item T is added, Gym Floor Refinishing at Various Schools. Item U added, Annual Agreement Custodial Services. Under Section 28, Consent Human Resources Employee Services, Item A is added, Agreement Between the School District of Escambia County and TPG Cultural Exchange Services. Under Section 31, Consent Operations Facilities Planning Miscellaneous, Item D is deleted, Lease Agreement Between School Board of Escambia County, Florida and Specialized Education Services. And under Section 43, Items from the Superintendent Other, Item B is added, Agreement for Legal Services between the School Board of Escambia County, Florida and W. Rogers Turner Jr., William H. Ragnert Attorneys at Law and HR Law Practicing Attorney. That concludes the additions and deletions.
Thank you, sir. State statutes and school board rules require that changes made to the agenda after publication be based on a finding of good cause determined by the person designated to preside over the meeting and stated in the record. Is there any objection from any board member to the additions or deletions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended for good cause at this meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the amended agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Slaton. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Heitzauer. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you, sir. Moving into committee and departmental reports, we will start with the PTA presentation. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In this evening, we have Melanie Campbell to present to us.
Good evening. Thank you for the time to speak on behalf of the Escambia County Council of PTA. On May 6th, Florida PTA held the Reflections Art Ceremony for the state winners in central Florida. The six winners from Escambia County were unable to attend. So tonight, on behalf of Florida PTA, I, along with Kirsten Palmer, ECC PTA Reflections Chair, would like to present these awards to our winners. Gracie Garmon, MB Cook, Award of Parker Brown, AK Suter, Award of Merit Photography.[1101.01][1101.01](APPLAUSE) Haven Parker, Cardova Park, Award of Excellence.[1111.83][1111.83](MUTTERING) Haven is also a winner at the national PTA level as an Award of Merit.[1124.75][1124.75](APPLAUSE) Three of our winners could not make it tonight. Piper Farr, MB Cook, Award of Excellence, Music Composition. Gabby Oaks, Award of Merit, Music Composition. Both of, she was on MB Cook too, sorry, I think. Hannah Bates, Award of Merit, Literature. It has been a great year for our PTAs who have accomplished so much to support our students, their families, and their schools. I am grateful for all the PTA volunteers and for their dedication to support education in Escambia County. Thank you again for the time to share some of the work of our PTAs.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.[1171.08][1171.08](APPLAUSE)
Mr. Chairman, if I could just take a moment too and thank Ms. Campbell for her leadership with our PTA. She has been a dedicated leader and we are grateful for all that she has done. Thank you, Ms. Campbell. We appreciate you.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Next is Escambia County School District Business Partner of the Year, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The district's business partner of the year for the 2022-2023 school year is the Pensacola Blue Wahoos Steve Bryce Executive Vice President and General Manager, if he could come to the podium. There he is. Welcome, Mr. Bryce.[1231.15][1231.15](APPLAUSE) The Pensacola Blue Wahoos sponsor the KAZU reading program, which reaches over 16,000 students in Escambia County to include a presentation from KAZU, the team's mascot. KAZU gives each child a free ticket to a Blue Wahoos baseball game once they have read four books. Education Days at Ballpark began in 2023. During Education Days, Escambia County students take a field trip to the baseball park where they learn about baseball and STEM programs. Tables are set up on the concourse to give students the opportunity to learn about power and other STEM items. The Blue Wahoos have also hosted area high school students and local colleges at the Education Day games to give students information about programs such as Tobacco-Free Florida, which discourages tobacco use and substance abuse. The Blue Wahoos honor an Escambia County staff member during their home stand games. Teachers and staff are honored with the recognition on the board and free tickets to a Blue Wahoos game. Additionally, the Blue Wahoos hosted a Teacher of the Year celebration and honored the district teacher of the year. The Blue Wahoos believe the KAZU reading program provides literary concepts to students in a way that encourages reading. By providing tickets, we also provide students with a new experience which also grows their ability to learn through experiences. The Education Days have proved a huge success in the community, emerged baseball and learning to give students a fun way to learn about STEM programs, college opportunities in the community, as well as the importance in staying away from tobacco and other harmful substances. The Blue Wahoos and the Suter family of companies aim to make our communities the greatest place to live in the world. Through their partnership with the Escambia County Public Schools, they are able to meet the future of our community in their early years and encourage habits and a mindset that help them become productive members of our community. In addition, the partnership also rewards the teachers in our community who have dedicated their lives to making our community a better place to live. The partnership helps us live our mission to improve the quality of life in our community. We are grateful to have been able to build this wonderful partnership. The past winter, the Pensacola Blue Wahoos hosted a family movie night at the ballpark for the Escambia County School District staff and their families. It was a night filled with fun and fellowship. It was wonderful to see over 1,000 of our employees and their families have an opportunity to kick back and enjoy a little downtime under the stars at the beautiful Pensacola Blue Wahoos baseball stadium. During the Teacher of the Year celebration and collaboration with our Office of Community Involvement, every teacher of the year from each of our schools and special centers received two free tickets to the game along with a special edition Teacher of the Year t-shirt and ball cap. Our district's teacher of the year was allowed to throw out the first pitch and one of our talented high school seniors was allowed to sing the National Anthem. Mr. Bryce, we thank you for all that you and the Blue Wahoos do. Please come to the dais. We'll get a photograph and shake hands with the board. We also have an item to present to you.[1430.24][1430.24](APPLAUSE)
On behalf of the Blue Wahoos, I can't say it enough how grateful we are with the partnership with you all, with the Board of Education, the whole school system. Everything you just read, Dr. Smith, is unbelievable what we've been able to do together. Not to mention, most of our game day staff are former teachers or current teachers. So, we really couldn't do it without your help. So, we appreciate the nomination and everything you all do to help partner with us. Like you said, to make this the best place to live in the world, and we strive for that every day. So, I appreciate it, and anything you all need, let us know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Superintendent, our Stellar Employee of the Month? The Year, oh, of the Year.
The Year.
No, it says of the month.
It's the Year.
All right.
Do you have the volunteer award?
I have the volunteer after this.
After, okay, great. Can find my... I have a few here. Here we go. Each year, the Office of Community Involvement chooses a Stellar Employee of the Year from all of the previously recognized Stellar Employees of the Month during the school year. For the 2022-2023 school year, we are proud to recognize Ms. Miranda Brown-Bethune as the Escambia County School District Stellar Employee of the Year. Miranda has worked in the Office of Enrollment Services formerly School Choice for the past nine years and as an employee of the district for thirty-three years. As the enrollment clerk and now data specialist, she is a caring, considerate person that takes time to meet with families and help them navigate the enrollment, withdrawal, and transfer process for our traditional schools, home education, and virtual education options. She always has the best interests of our families in mind and holds a true understanding of the challenges many of our families are faced with. As she reviews documentation, she looks for creative and non-traditional solutions to ensure academic success for these students. Since the beginning of the pandemic, our office has seen a dramatic increase in the number of students attending schools and programs outside of their residential attendance zones. Miranda assists these families with their concern and compassion many of these families need at just the right time. At the conclusion of the pandemic, she worked tirelessly with our social workers to ensure students were receiving information on returning to school from the remote and virtual platforms, reaching out to families and assisting them with services that would enable a smooth transition back into the school setting. Miranda is a bridge between our school district and our home education community, building positive relationships with homeschool families that has allowed our district to be a leader statewide in school choice options for all students. While serving mostly non-traditional students in her role with the school district, she treats everyone, students, families, and district-wide staff with professionalism and respect while supporting our district's mission to be united for every student to succeed. Miranda will receive a plaque and a check for five hundred dollars from Members First Credit Union. Here to present the check to Ms. Brown-Bethune is Julea Trim, and she is a marketing communication specialist at Members First Credit Union of Florida, and joining her is Ms. Wannecott, Coordinator of Community Involvement. Congratulations to Miranda for a great job done.
I'm gonna just take a moment and say I'm thankful to God to be here at this point in time in my life, and I'd like to thank all the friends, family that I've met over my thirty-three years working with the district. It's just been awesome. Some of them are still like family, I still see them, we get together, and some of them are here with me today. And I would just like to thank Mr. Mike Farland, thank the whole staff, thank the school district. It's been a pleasure, it's been a joy, and I really love working with kids, and it's just the beginning, it's not the end. So, I'd just like to say thank you to everybody, and a special thanks to my family for taking the time to come out and share this with me and all my friends and those that are friends but are considered family. All right, thank you, guys, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Superintendent, the Outstanding Volunteers of the Year.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Outstanding School Volunteer Awards are presented annually to volunteers who have shown outstanding dedication and commitment to quality education in Florida. This recognition serves to highlight and inspire strong school and community relationships, including innovative approaches to improve the academic performance and resiliency of students. Three categories are recognized: youth, adult, and senior. The Outstanding Youth Volunteer for the 2022-2023 school year, Madison Noble, Kingsfield Elementary. Madison Noble volunteers her time to assist in a third-grade classroom at Kingsfield Elementary School. She's been a volunteer at the school for two years and averages an hour per week working in a third-grade gifted classroom. Madison's volunteer work has benefited over forty students. Every Wednesday, the students get excited when they hear the doorbell ring because they know it is Ms. Maddie, ready to help the class family for the day. One day that Ms. Maddie helps out, or one way that Ms. Maddie helps out is by working with students during small groups. She leads hands-on learning activities to foster a love for each subject. Students are always eager when it is their group's turn to work with her. Students from last year jump for joy when they see her in the hallway and cannot wait to smile and wave. Ms. Maddie is an integral part of Kingsfield Elementary School, and she adds to the positive climate with her bubbly personality. Madison is inspired to become an educator after graduating from college. It is for these reasons and so many more that Ms. Madison Noble has been chosen by the Office of Community Involvement as the Escambia County School District's Outstanding Youth Volunteer for the 2022-2023 school year. Congratulations, Madison, and please come forward. Outstanding Adult Volunteer for the 2022-2023 school year, Brianna Parsons, Blue Angels Elementary. Ms. Parsons has been a volunteer in the Blue Angels Elementary School library for two years. She volunteers an average of four hours per week in the library and during school-wide events. The entire student body of seven hundred and sixty-six students and fifty-one classrooms benefit from the volunteer services that Mrs. Parsons provides. This year, she helped seven hundred and sixty-six students improve the percent correct on their accelerated reader quizzes by five point five percent since the beginning of this school year. Ms. Parsons is an asset to the library due to her willing spirit, knowledge of books, and sweet personality. Each week, she assists students who come to the library by helping them select books. She helps with the delivery of library services by checking out students' books, checking in books that have been returned, and shelving books. She is willing to assist with running the book fair twice a year and help students select and purchase books for their personal libraries. In addition to volunteering during school hours, Ms. Parsons devotes time after school to serve on the Library Advisory Council as a parent representative. In addition to assisting in the library, she also assists throughout the school as needed. For example, during picture day, she assisted with helping students, teachers, and the photographers stay organized and on time. Every quarter, she also assists with the PBIS event, which rewards students who have good citizenship. Brianna Parsons is a volunteer who exemplifies what it means to be a team player as she is always willing to serve the needs of the students at Blue Angels Elementary. Ms. Parsons, congratulations and thank you for your service. Please approach the dais. Outstanding Senior Volunteer for the 2022-2023 school year, Gwen Wright, Ensley Elementary. Ms. Gwen Wright is a retired teacher who helps serve second and third grade ESE and kindergarten students at Ensley Elementary School. She has served students by working in small groups, teaching foundational math skills, and assisting our teachers with classroom duties. Since she has volunteered at Ensley, their kindergarten students have shown an overall increase fourteen percent in their reading skills and five percent increase in math, according to the most recent Starr Report. In addition, second and third grade ESE students have continued to show improvement and growth. Ms. Wright is patient and passionate about our students, and this is evident in her actions. Due to a shortage of staffing, kindergarten classes were at maximum capacity, and Ms. Wright's help was invaluable. Ms. Wright also helped a long-term substitute teacher at the beginning of the school year transition into serving as a kindergarten teacher. Her dedication and love for teaching students does not go unnoticed. Our students gravitate towards her, and she instills a positive culture at Ensley Elementary. Students look forward to having the opportunity to work with Ms. Wright as she contributes to the positive culture in the classroom by instilling the love of learning and taking the time to build relationships with our students. She embodies the Escambia County Public Schools' mission through her selfless acts for our school. All three volunteers have been presented as staff at the Escambia County School District as Escambia County School District nominee for consideration as the Florida Department of Education's Outstanding Youth, Adult, and Senior Volunteers of the Year. We congratulate Ms. Gwen Wright as our Senior Volunteer. Come forward to us.
Just like to say it's an honor to be at Ensley and the hard-working staff, and if all of the schools in Escambia County work as hard as this staff does, then we have a great system here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent, you have a special thing here?
Yes, we do, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have an individual on the executive staff who will soon be entering retirement after thirty-seven years of service. Steve Marciano, our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, has done a stellar job. And I just wanted to share a few words that come to mind to give a little insight about this incredible educator. So, here goes the list: leadership, cares, dedication, values, dependable, reliable, trustworthy, loyal, passionate, does what is right, honest, efficient, strong, and unflappable, outstanding educator. Mr. Marciano, I just thank you for the work that you have done, the career that you have had. You've given so much to kids, to staff members, to leaders, families, this entire district and community. And on a personal note, I want to thank you as a new superintendent coming in. It has been great to have such an outstanding leader, educator, and individual in your role. In your role, you have been a tremendous help to me, and I'm grateful for that. I really have to tap, you know, tip my hat to my predecessor Malcolm Thomas because he did a great job hiring you. So, and thank, I appreciate that. And I hope that you look back at your career and feel pleased about what you have accomplished and the impact that you have had on this school district and the community and the many, many people. So, thank you for that, I really am proud to have worked with you, and I wish you and Mari the very best in retirement, enjoy every bit of it, very well deserved. And so, if you would come forward, we have a plaque, and the plaque says, "Thirty-seven years of service presented to Steve Marciano. Thirty-seven years of dedicated and selfless service to the students, families, and employees of Escambia County School District, the sixteenth day of May, 2023." And I think it's very fitting that this is happening before an incredible group of principals and assistant principals who happen to be here this evening. So, please come forward, Mr. Marciano.
Well, thank you, this was quite the surprise. I thought I knew what was going on around here. Well, thank you, thank you for this recognition. I will just say that I've been very, very blessed. This district has been my life for thirty-seven years. Marge Anderson took a chance on a young man as a first-grade teacher at Hallmark Elementary, and I'm grateful to her for that and to all the people that have guided me and provided opportunities for me to serve in different capacities, and so it's been a blessing. And certainly, I've tipped my hat off to all of the principals and assistant principals. You guys are amazing, and the teachers, they do God's work every day, and it's just been an honor to be a part of that. So, thank you all, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Next, Mr. Superintendent, Common Sense School Recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is my honor to present to you our school that has achieved Common Sense School Recognition, Sherwood Elementary School. I'd like to invite the principal and her team to approach the podium. Common Sense Media provides a free K-12 digital citizenship curriculum, complete with lessons and family resources. These lessons engage students in discussions and activities that teach them to think critically as they navigate digital dilemmas in their everyday lives. The school recognition program challenges schools to go through the steps to learn through teacher participation in online professional development, teach digital citizenship lessons, engage families in activities, reflect, and apply for school recognition. Upon meeting these challenges, a school earns the Common Sense School Badge, a symbol of dedication and commitment to helping students use technology responsibly to learn, create, and participate. Sherwood Elementary School has met these challenges during the school year and has worked through the steps to earn the Common Sense School Badge. Ms. Tammy Douglas, Mr. John Carey, and Ms. Tamika Warwick, please approach the dais to receive your certificate and greet the board.
Next, we have a resolution in support of the Escambia County School District Principals and Assistant Principals. Mr. Superintendent, you want to read the resolution?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. "Whereas our principals and assistant principals provide visionary leadership and tireless pursuit of success for each student, and whereas our principals and assistant principals are responsible for the safety of their students and staff and the security of the school, and whereas schools inspire the next generation of professionals, public servants, artists, educators, and others who contribute to a more perfect union and prosperous society, and whereas our principals and assistant principals are responsible for providing instructional leadership and professional management in our schools, and whereas our principals and assistant principals spend countless..." principals and assistant principals spend countless hours after school supporting and attending activities involving their students, and whereas our principals and assistant principals guide and support their schools each and every day in ways large and small, and work collectively with our teachers to implement and maintain rigorous curricula and set ambitious performance standards, and whereas our principals and assistant principals are instrumental in fostering a collaborative partnership between the community and the school in order to create a positive learning environment. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Escambia County School Board commends the service of all elementary, middle, high school, and special center principals and assistant principals, and wishes to recognize the importance of their school leadership so that every child has access to a high-quality education and to celebrate school leader accomplishments. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the regular meeting of said board, and that a copy be tendered to Escambia County School District Principals and Assistant Principals, adopted the 16th Day of May 2023. I would also like to add that we are grateful for the work that our leadership at our schools, our assistant principals and principals do every day, as this resolution has highlighted. Thank you very much for your dedication and service.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hi, Tower.
I just want to say thank you to all of our leaders gathered here today, and I don't know whether we're going to have them come forward. Good, good, because May, as you can tell, is a very busy month for everybody, but we didn't want the year to end without letting people know that we appreciate your leadership. We, I know many up here have been in that role before. I am not one of them, and I know that, that is done is, is amazing, and, and people need to walk in your shoes one day. If, if we could get legislators to take their shoes one time to see all of the things that you do and what your passion and your efforts mean to the children in our school, we'd be in a much better place. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hightower.
Just very briefly, thank you, Ms. Hightower. Very well, very well spoken, and I just want to say thank you to my former colleagues and the new ones that are out there. Thank you for what you do. The hours, no one can calculate the number of hours that are spent, not just at school, but before school, after school, and way after school, and we appreciate it very much, including you coming tonight. So, thank you very much, and please, please stay with us as long as you'd like. Even the legislature wants you to stay longer, finally. So, we appreciate it, and thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, sir. And you, Mr. Adams?
Well, I just want to thank each one of them. I know some of them see me in their schools, you know, and I'm always amazed at what they can do with just such a limited staff. A lot of times with limited teachers, and you're still getting the education done in those schools, so for that, I appreciate it and thank you. Hope you do get a little bit of rest this summer, maybe, you know? And I know y'all are kind of full timers all the way through the summer, but I appreciate each and every one of y'all.
And I echo everything that the board members have said, and just wish you have a safe summer and hope that you take some time off and come back and do it again.
We really appreciate you. I really appreciate you. Thank you, and may God bless you.
Thank you. I too want to thank you for the dedication, the service that you provide. I've said for years and mean it from the bottom of my heart, the greatest asset that we have in this school district is the people who work in this school district. There is nothing that is of more importance or greater value than the people who, who serve, serve in these capacities. You're not thanked enough, you're not paid enough, you're not appreciated enough sometimes, but from the bottom of our hearts, we do appreciate you. Thank you for what you do, and, and thank you for sharing your lives with the lives of the children that, that you have touched through your careers. That being said, let's vote. We, we would like the principals to come forward, so assistant, we'll start with assistant principals first. Come. Can we fit? Well, if we could fit everyone, we'll do, we'll do everybody together. Principals and assistant principals, so that we could get a group photo. Yeah, I told Derek, I told Derek, I says...
No worries. I'll just wait till the crowd turns down.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, before we begin the public forum, the superintendent has one more announcement to make.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have received a preliminary response from Cognia on our accreditation, and the feedback was positive that we will be accredited. A more formal report will be coming, so we need to announce that. We want to thank our, our team who worked so hard on that. We appreciate Ms. Wilkins, her, her team, the counselor there, she did a tremendous job, so we're very fortunate to have them.
Thank you, sir. We will now begin public forum. The purpose of the public forum is to give members of the public the opportunity to address the school board on any matter regarding education and the administration of our schools. In this setting, we as board members are not compelled to answer questions or to respond to you, and typically will not engage in back-and-forth dialogue in this venue. However, this board and the superintendent will note your contact information for a response if appropriate. As always, we invite you to contact any of us by phone or email for follow-up. A list of our meeting times and locations is posted on the Escambia County School District website. Speakers must adhere to the guidelines printed on the back of the speaker form. On the form, please be sure to indicate whether your intention is speak at the public forum or to a specific item on tonight's agenda. Please direct your comments to the chair. You are expected to be respectful when you address to the board. You are also asked to use titles and not individual names. Personal attacks against school board members, superintendent, staff, or employees will not be tolerated. If you fail to follow these guidelines, you will be warned by the chair and subject to removal if violations continue. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Mrs. Odom will serve as parliamentarian. Ms. Buswell is our timekeeper and will start the timer with your opening remarks. The buzzer will sound when your time has elapsed, and when the timer sounds, please bring your comments to a close. Again, we will be respectful and professional during people speaking, and we will begin with Mr. Ellison Bennett, who has three minutes, and the second speaker will be Vicki Baggett, who will have six minutes.
Thank you. I stand before you as a board member for the National Movement for Civil and Human Rights. I was born in Warrenton. I served as a mentor at Warrenton Middle School under Mrs. Rush, and, and I took it personal when the Commissioner of Education said things against the hard-working teachers past and present of Warrenton Middle School. And I want to say thank you to those teachers and administrators that have worked very hard to save that school. You know, I, I, as a former elected official, I served on the city council in Polk County. It comes a time when you have to stand for what is right, stand on principle. To give this district a ultimatum really, really makes me anger, but you know, I pray every day for the children. So I want to say to the Commissioner of Education, trouble don't last always.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Ms. Baggett, and she has minutes donated from Gary Baggett. Would he please raise his hand so I know that he's okay in the audience? Thank you, sir. And then it would be Brittany Lovelady.
My name is Vicki Baggett, a 32-year veteran English teacher from right here in this county. Thank you to Kevin Adams and Paul Fetzko for trying to come up with a definitive and simple plan of action in last week's workshop concerning compliance with inappropriate books all throughout our school district. I have been emailing all of you for over a year now, and the only books that have been removed from the libraries completely are those I have had to appeal, with the exception of some Sarah J. Maas books that I submitted, all thanks to a parent who stood her ground on these books with the review committee. Incidentally, two other Sarah J. Maas books have been submitted, complete with detailed descriptions of major sex scenes about two lovers with heat pounding between their legs and grinding their bodies against each other. These books are only in the restricted section, even at the middle school level, and page 527 will give our minors, whose parents have opted in, a first-person point of view of a man's orgasmic reaction to a sexual experience with his lover. Why are these books not completely removed from the libraries as well? Is this material suited to student needs? Is a sexual experience something that students are tested on, on their state-required assessments, especially for middle schoolers? We can all agree that come July the 1st, we should see a definite change in what is available in our school libraries. I have been begging you simply to follow the law and remove books that are obviously inappropriate. Dr. Smith had assured me at our impromptu meeting back in March that that was going to happen right away, but it didn't. Instead, many of us easily keep finding inappropriate books. Sadly, we have those impositions of authority who simply do nothing. For instance, one of my colleagues sent in a book to be reviewed called Be Prepared. This book is currently found in multiple elementary and middle schools in our school district. This means children as young as five can check out this graphic novel. In this book, there is a section where the main middle school character begins her menstrual cycle, and she does not know what has happened to her. Her mean classmates take her stained underwear and run them up a flagpole to embarrass her. Is this age appropriate for young children? There's another part where the same girl has a middle school crush on an older boy. Her classmates encourage her to go ahead and sit on his lap when they are at a campfire spot. The boy responds with a smile and excitement on his face, and he is begging the girl to definitely sit in his lap. Again, is this age or content appropriate? But guess what? This particular book was not considered inappropriate enough to restrict from our younger children. Our Director of Media Services has stated in an email to me concerning books that end up in the restricted section that this is based on multiple reviews and the information given in the challenge. In other words, those who are making these decisions are not reading the books. I have asked Dr. Smith what will happen when there is failure to comply come July the 1st. His email response to me was that the accountability falls to each school location and that discipline would come after allegations and investigations. So, does that mean he is expecting each school to take ownership of their books? Can he assume that the leadership in each school will comply with the law? As recently as two weeks ago, I had to send emails to each of you with copies to Tallahassee that many of the books that were voted to be removed or restricted were still available in, in our libraries. By the end of that day, with my name being the topic of many conversations, so I heard, many of our libraries had been cleaned up. Thank you for that, but why had this not already been done? We need people who will do their jobs. Instead, according to many parents, some of our administrators and librarians are even showcasing specific restricted books by placing them in glass cases near the library checkout spots, deliberately enticing students, and it is my understanding that one of our board members has even seen this himself. In addition to the book situation, we now have added West Florida's Public Library Link and their online eBooks, which contain many of the books that you have ordered removed from our district. Are we going to use school-supplied Chromebooks to download the free app called Libby that would give our students unlimited eBook access to various types of books? If so, won't we be held accountable in offering potential inappropriate material? come July the 1st. His email response to me was that the accountability falls to each school location and that discipline would come after allegations and investigations. So does that mean he is expecting each school to take ownership of their books? Can he assume that the leadership in each school will comply with the law? As recently as two weeks ago, I had to send emails to each of you with copies to Tallahassee that many of the books that were voted to be removed or restricted were still available in our libraries. By the end of that day, with my name being the topic of many conversations, so I heard, many of our libraries have been cleaned up. Thank you for that. But why had this not already been done? We need people who will do their jobs. Instead, according to many parents, some of our administrators and librarians are even showcasing specific restricted books by placing them in glass cases near the library checkout spots, deliberately enticing students. And it is my understanding that one of our board members has even seen this himself. In addition to the book situation, we now have added West Florida's Public Library Link and their online eBooks, which contain many of the books that you have ordered removed from our district. Are we going to use school-supplied Chromebooks to download the free app called Libby that would give our students unlimited eBook access to various types of books? If so, won't we be held accountable in offering potential inappropriate material to minors? I asked this question two weeks ago to no avail. With the new library-media access policy, where parents can choose specific access, the assumption is that those entrusted positions have already vetted the books in questions and have left their personal opinions out of the decision-making and followed the law regardless. Everybody in this room knows that that is not the case. My colleagues and I will continue to add to our ever-growing list of age and content inappropriate books throughout the district. We're going to keep making surprise visits to libraries. However, we are going to stand by now and watch to see what happens come July the 1st. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baggett. Brittany Lovelady will have three minutes, and then Joshua Luther, after her. Oh, she... Oh, the one that came in later? Okay, you'll have six minutes.
Hi, my name is Brittany Lovelady. I am the mother of two twin daughters at Bailey Middle School. I am here to talk about disciplinary issues within the schools and, quite frankly, just unruly students causing disruptions in the class, causing problems for my daughter's education. And it's not just my daughters. I don't stand alone in this. I have talked to numerous parents, not just within the Bailey School District, but all over. We need to make a change. Us as parents have rights, according to the Florida State statutes, for school safety. Our children need to feel safe in these schools. I am tired of hearing of students being afraid to go to the restrooms because they're being videoed or pictured in these restrooms. And you know, that is child pornography. I have started advising parents press charges because I don't want to see pictures of my daughters naked going around the school. I don't want them receiving pictures of other kids naked going around the school. Also, students are being, quite frankly, unruly, and these teachers cannot get a handle on it because of this matrix that is put into place. It is extremely confusing. It ties the hands of these teachers, causing them to not be able to discipline these students, which just makes them give more disruptions. They get sent to I L R. They're there for, what, 40 days? Then they come right back, do the same thing again, get sent right back to I L R because they can't go anywhere. According to my research, what used to be Camelot, I think, is now Achieve, is full. These students don't have anywhere else to go. They can't be expelled. So something needs to be done within our schools, not just Bailey, not just middle schools, it's elementary, it's high school as well, to get these students a proper education without the disruption of unruly students. And I understand, you know, there are the issues of... all these disciplinary issues can start within the home. However, these students are within the school for eight hours a day. They are at school for more waking hours with their teachers than they are at home. I am fed up with how everything is being handled. These students need more discipline in a rightful manner, and I'm not trying to say that they need corporal punishment, no. But whenever they go to detention, they're sitting there playing games or just sitting there doing nothing. Have them go clean the bathrooms that they so rightfully think they can just ride all over. Have them go clean up the trash that they want to just throw in the courtyards. Find something that is fitting to the punishment or to the crime of whatever they've done, and stick to it. Don't just sit there and be like, oh, well, you've got detention. Just sit there. Or, you know, find something to do that. Another thing that I've looked into is engaging more with these students. The more that they're engaged, the less time that they have to cause more disruptions. And with that, I yield.
Thank you, ma'am. Joshua Luther will have six minutes. He has three donated from Charles Luther. And then it'll be Ciara Chapaffin.
It is interesting to note that in our invocations these days, we've stopped invoking. I think it's maybe because people think they've banished God from the realm of politics, but I'm not sure. I want to read in a couple of sections from the article, "The Shameless Versus the Unashamed," written by Douglas Wilson. "No-level playing field. The lie of secularism has lured many evangelical leaders into the false notion that the conflict between good and evil is like a football game with neutral refs. According to this naive view, the refs just call the penalties, applying them equitably to both sides, and somehow the refs are supposed to apply their calls honestly but without being in submission to any particular sectarian standard or definition of honesty. For to be in submission to a transcendent standard of honesty and integrity would put them on the side of the good football team, and that would be cheating. And so they somehow adopt this unattributed standard of refing a game that just floats above their heads somehow. They judge the game in accordance with the rulebook from somewhere. It was probably somewhere important, and one thing that rulebook of dubious origins disallowed. It was any form of cheating. But this is nonsense. Jesus can call his opponents "whited seplicers" because they were whited seplicers, and they do not get to call him a glutton and a drunkard because he wasn't one. There is no penalty here for generic name-calling. There is the truth, and there are lies. Now, we have all seen games where the hometown refs appear to be participants in the game and were not playing the role of objective and honest refs. They appear to be actively working for the hometown boys. But this issue of shamelessness I am speaking of goes well beyond the question of obvious bias. We live in a time when the refs come out onto the court wearing the jerseys of the hometown team. When our coach went over to them in order to inquire about it, he had a technical called on him, and when the assistant coach went over to inquire about that, he was ejected from the game." So what does the Bible say about these two categories, about the shameless and the unashamed? The shameless: The hypocrites acknowledge the standards of God but do not live according to them. They do not live according to them deliberately. Struggling sinners acknowledge the standards of God and attempt to live in accordance with them, with varying degrees of success. But the shameless defy the standards of God. "Such is the way of an adulterous woman; she eateth and wipeth her mouth and saith, 'I have done no wickedness,'" Proverbs 30:20. "When the shamelessness is far gone, the most abominable things can be done, and the echo-chamber of approval from others engaged in the same wickedness reinforces the evil. The residents of Sodom who gathered on Lot's front porch still had their standards, objecting as they did to Lot's implied rebuke of their behavior. They were gathered there to rape Lot's house guests, and they took offense at the fact that Lot had forgotten our Lord's admonition to 'Judge not lest ye be judged.' And they said, 'Stand back,' and they said again, 'This one fellow came in to sojourn, and he will needs be a judge. Now we will deal worse with thee than with them,' and they pressed sore upon the man, even Lot, and came near to break the door," Genesis 19:9. "The shameless are under the judgment of God. The day of visitation is coming for them, and when it arrives, they will be cast down and cast down utterly. Were they ashamed when they had committed abomination? Nay, they were not at all ashamed; neither could they blush. Therefore shall they fall among them that fall in the time of their visitation. They shall be cast down, saith the Lord," Jeremiah 8:12. Scripture says that homosexual acts are shameful, men with men committing what is shameful. So we find ourselves in the middle of Pride Month, and we have pride parades and pride floats and rainbow flags everywhere. This has to be considered as the height of shamelessness. "Likewise also the men, leaving the natural use of the woman, burned in their lust for one another, men with men committing what is shameful and receiving in themselves the penalty of their error, which was due," Romans 1:21. At a school board meeting last week, the coordinator of media services asked, "If we are saying that in K-5 we cannot have any books with two moms or two dads, what are we saying to those children with two moms and two dads?" What we should be saying to them and to everyone else is that the God who made the heavens and the earth has given us the institution of marriage as a picture of his relationship with his people. And God has defined marriage as a lifelong covenant between one man and one woman, and any deviation is intolerable blasphemy and rebellion against the Lord of all creation. The Florida Constitution, which each one of you swore to uphold, recognizes God's ruling in this matter by saying, "Inasmuch as marriage is the legal union of only one man and one woman, as husband and wife, no other legal union that is treated as marriage or the substantial equivalent thereof shall be valid or recognized." The public education system, just like everything else, belongs to God, the Creator and King of all. You have the solemn duty, as his servants, to submit truly to his law and the exercise of the powers that you have been given. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luther. Ciara Chapaffin?
It's Ciara, thank you. Hi, my name is Ciara, and I'm speaking also about a meeting which happened last Thursday, in which board members insinuated that the so-called Stop Woke Act and the Don't Say Gay law should apply equally to libraries as they do the classroom. First of all, we know that these laws are meritless and unconstitutional, so I don't see why we should do the work of the far-right wing legislature for them. If they want to pass a bill to do that, then go ahead and do it. But we should not take our own initiative to strip away the speech rights of students and teachers. We trust the principals in this room to administer and to provide appropriate materials, okay? The point of this, as the last speaker outlined very well, is that they want to invalidate and erase the recognition of LGBTQ people. That's what this push is about. LGBTQ people are not indoctrination towards children just for being near them. I have nieces. Am I a threat to my nieces just for being transgender? I don't think so. Another bill that's being pushed forward right now is the state legislature wants to prevent teachers from being able to be transgender in their own occupation of teaching. Does the board support this? We should protect children, and the way we protect children is by enforcing the Civil Rights Act. It's by enforcing the Fourteenth Amendment. And it is not to allow a right-wing legislature to stomp over our civil society. We need to be providing protection on the basis of sex to our young children. But there are policies that have been put forward and implemented that discriminate against transgender students. That's discrimination on the basis of sex, which is unconstitutional, as we know, and violates the Civil Rights Act. There's a higher body than the state of Florida, folks, and it is our constitution. And we cannot allow them to preempt each and every one of our rights. Another issue with banning books, as the counselor insinuated they'd like to do. What they want to do right now is apply the Stop Woke Act and Don't Say Gay to our libraries. What has been... We have seen book bans in this county. We're now seeing the book purge, okay? Stop the book purge. It's unacceptable for us to be speaking in this manner when we say we're going to clean up... We're going to clean up our libraries of what? Of LGBTQ people existing? Of books on themes of race and gender? Are you kidding me? You're going to send marching orders to clean up our schools? How about we pass comprehensive protections for transgender students? That's what we need.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Melanie Eubanks. She'll have six minutes. I have three donated from Neil McDonald. And next would be Linda Fussell.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Distinguished board members, I ask you, what justifiable reason are members in our community wanting to sexualize our children and take away their innocence? You're here to protect children and see that they receive a quality education without being exploited. We depend on you to clean up our classrooms and our schools. If it cannot be in the classroom, it should not be in our schools. It is time for you to take responsibility and include self-selected books. The self-selected books, in all forms, links, and any other label that are put on them to avoid following the law and keeping them hidden in the schools. Are you aware that there's a link on some of the school websites to a library outside of Escambia County School? Who's going to be liable for that? There is another thing, is who approved this? There are repercussions and consequences of lifestyles these books promote, and they can be seen in the daily news. Here in Florida, a man was charged for sexually abusing minors, a teen mom throwing her baby in the dumpster, women being groped in stores, incest, drugs, hidden cameras in bathrooms. A man was charged for sexually assaulting a horse, and the list goes on. A change needs to happen because these items have been in our self-selected library books. In 1856, a teacher in England, Mr. Wiseman, gave a speech to his students. He cautioned his young friends as to the habits they contracted in early life. "Whatsoever a man soweth, that shall he also reap." He developed over a time for them to watch their thoughts, and they became their words. And we all know that little saying, or at least most of us do. But I challenge you, what if you insert that word "sow"? Watch what you sow in your thoughts, because they do become your words. And what are books? Books are written words. This saying has stood over time because it holds truth. If we change what? Watch to sow, as the professor did 150 years ago. It gives a new perspective. Sow your thoughts; they reap words. Your words reap actions. Your action reaps habits, and your habits reap character, and your character reaps your destiny. The future, the destiny of Escambia County Schools, are in your decisions. We want to be able to trust you and those you hire. Some employees have shown themselves untrustworthy. And I'm not speaking against every media specialist. I'm speaking about the ones who will not comply with the law voluntarily. They go out of their way to keep these self-selected, sexually explicit, and age-inappropriate books available to minors. We need to do like Santa Rosa County and close the libraries up and clean them up. The buck stops with the school board. Why is character so important? We want people to have integrity. We want them to have accountability, respect. We want a foundation of truth and honesty. And when you have people who have selected books that don't meet the criteria for the state laws, then it's like, how can you trust them to purge them out of the system? They find ways to go around it and hide it. And, you know, the quizzes. Last week, I heard the coordinator of media say that Myon and AR, they could be purged if you gave the word. All that could be out of there. I like the idea of an AR-type system, where kids can take a test and see what they're doing. It is instructional material. Why do we use the STAR system if it's not? And I think we need to do something. I think the process of being limited access and opt-in policy is faulty, and it's not necessary if we're compliant. You want to attract to teachers who will stay, and you want to keep parents and their kids in the school? Then Escambia County has to get back to a good foundation of honesty. My neighbor has said, "Escambia County had their chance with my kids. They're gone." We want to build our schools on a foundation of truth and honesty, transparency, accountability, respect, and integrity. Teachers need to know they matter. Teachers are not mental health counselors, and neither are these books. Show me how you take care of your teachers, and I will tell you how you take care of your students. It's past time to begin to repair the crumbling foundation of character in building our schools. Then our schools have a better chance of being unified, stand on the truth, make our schools a better place for students to learn and teachers to teach. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Linda Fussell, and you have three minutes donated from Lindsay Durche. And then would be Haley Freeman.
Thank you. Just so everybody knows, students have to have a public library card in order to access the West Florida Public Library here from your Chromebooks and/or your computers. It's clear to me, after Thursday's workshop, that there is a lack of understanding of the service that school libraries provide beyond the classroom. Even the Supreme Court has noted the special characteristics of the school library, making it especially appropriate for the recognition of First Amendment rights of students, including the right to access information and ideas. School libraries are the hub of the school. Librarians are heavily involved in education, and changing technology means the library is actually more relevant than ever. School libraries help prepare students to live and learn in a world of information. The mission of school libraries is to ensure that students and staff are able to use ideas and information. While libraries support the efforts of teachers in the classroom... While libraries support the efforts of teachers in the classroom for instruction, school libraries support students and families and are often the only access to literature of any kind that school families experience. School libraries used to be kept open during the summer here in Escambia County so that families could access books outside of the regular school year. School libraries provide a broad range of materials for all students. They give students a unique opportunity for self-directed inquiry and access to resources to spark creativity in all of our young people. House Bill 7 and 11557 are the current laws used in the book challenges to identify books that are supposedly against the law, as identified in the majority of complaints filed against school library books. Both laws deal with instruction in the classroom. Importantly, instruction is not defined for the purposes of this law. Neither is age-appropriate. Both terms used extensively in the complaints. These challenges are aimed at silencing the stories of unrepresented and minority people and cultures. Suppressing these stories can be a form of discrimination. For example, banning books that feature LGBTQ+ characters can be a way of denying the existence and validity of these identities, which can be harmful to LGBTQ+ youth. Similarly, banning books that deal with topics like race, religion, or gender can perpetuate harmful stereotypes and prevent children from developing empathy and understanding for those who are different from them. Does HB 7 and HB 1557 apply to school library books? HB 7 censors protected speech in classrooms by banning teaching about systemic racism and gender and race discrimination. Again, the law prohibits instruction. This law seeks to erase America's complex and painful history of racism, oppression, and gender discrimination, which continues to impact our country and culture. So I ask the board to determine if HB 7 and HB 1557 apply to self-selected library books. By restricting access to diverse books, we limit the perspectives and voices that our students are exposed to, and are now missing out on the opportunity to see themselves and the diversity of our community in their school books. This can lead to a lack of diversity in thought and a narrowing of our collective understanding of the world. This is a discriminative tactic that perpetuates harmful rhetoric to our children and puts our students at risk of missing out on important ideas and concepts that could have a significant impact on their development and education. These laws could make students, such as those with two moms or two dads, feel like they need to hide parts of themselves at school. Are they not allowed to talk about their home life? What are you trying to tell them by saying, "You can't talk about it"? Creating policies that restrict freedoms for students to be themselves, biting with families that insist their heterosexual or cisgender children should feel comfortable in the school environment, essentially by never interacting with beliefs or people who are at odds with their own. We do not debate the existence of groups of people or their right to exist because they exist, whether we believe they do or not. We should not be prioritizing one student's comfort over another student's very existence. The stated reason for most book removals, especially those which concern sexual or social themes, is to protect children. At a time in which all sorts of material and imagery can be found on any number of electronic devices, that is unlikely. What they are likely to do, however, is to teach children undemocratic lessons, that if you do not like something, or you just do not want to see or hear something, you can just block it, that you can keep others from exercising their freedoms and thinking for themselves. Trying to limit or remove these freedoms is not patriotic. It is censorship, and most parents in Florida do not approve of the banning of books. Participating in the marketplace of ideas, a democratic society requires thick skin. Removing books because you are afraid of what they say, or more likely, who might read them and what they might learn or think, is anathema to liberty. I just want to take a second to tell Mr. Marciano, congratulations. Y'all may not know this, he's a big Bruce Springsteen fan. He and I share an affection for Bruce Springsteen, so rock on, Mr. Marciano, glory days. Thank you.
Next is Haley Freeman, followed by Heather Heathcox.
My name is Haley Freeman. I am a seventh-grade student at Bailey Middle School. At Bailey, we have three counselors that serve over 1,300 students, and it is not enough. My peers need prompt help while dealing with different situations. I know not every situation is an emergency, so I would like to present the idea of a peer mentorship program. We can use Google Chat to reach out to a group of mentors. This would be an elective class for the mentors. Doing it this way would not cost extra money or need new computer material systems. Currently, we have to make an appointment to see a counselor. When my peers are not able to get prompt help, they become a distraction. My peers will curse at other students and teachers, stop participating, throw things, and cry. When I don't have access to talk to someone properly, it's hard for me to focus and participate. Please consider my idea to create a mentorship program to make my school the learning environment it once was. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Heather Heathcox has three minutes, followed by Paula Montgomery.
Hello. Recently, I spoke to some staff at multiple different schools. I have three kids, Haley being one of them. I have an array of elementary, middle, and high. We all know that vaping is an issue, and it's not going to go away. I know that there have been previous educators to ask for vape detectors in the bathrooms. I know they're expensive. I ask that you allow the schools to do fundraising themselves for the vape detectors. If I could tell you the amount of times that my children, both ages, my older ones, come home and talk to me about how the kids in gym are high, or about how they're seeing vape clouds in the bathroom. As a proactive parent, I did have that conversation with my kids prior to going to middle school because, let's be honest, we're not ignorant. We know it happens, right? Had I not done that, I fear that my kids would have experimented with their peers. While we can't stop the issue, we can't prevent them from coming into school because kids are clever. They like to hide things everywhere. We can be more proactive while it's happening. I ask again that you allow the schools to take on that responsibility themselves and see if they can get the funds together to make the areas, especially the bathrooms, a safer place to be. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Paula Montgomery, followed by Marilyn McDonald.
Thank you. Thank you for the time. Thank you for hearing us. I didn't go to school here. I went to public schools, but it was elsewhere. But I've had children and grandchildren who've come through the Escambia County schools, and I have nothing but good things to say about that. I'm here today because there's something that nobody much has mentioned, and that's the effect of the lack of empathy on our society. If you think about the school shooters and the people, the mass murderers, and people find out what they were putting on their electronic stuff before this happened, and they say, "Oh, we should have known," because they were putting all sorts of hateful things, either race, or religion, or for some reason. A great many of them, that's where they come from. They have not learned empathy. They haven't learned that we're all God's children, regardless of our sexual orientation, or the color of our skin, or the shape of our eyes, or our religion, or anything else. And you should have respect and empathy for all people. One of my grandchildren told me about an incident of bullying that she saw in the school, and she said, "Oh, nobody liked him anyway." As if that were okay to pick on somebody because nobody liked him. I mean, it broke my heart to think about that lack of empathy with others and the seriousness in our whole society that we experience when we just don't have it. That empathy can be learned by reading about people who are different from us, and how they also have feelings, and how they also work hard, and they are very much like us, even though they may look different, and they may have different religion or a different sexual orientation. But we are all God's children, and all of us deserve respect and empathy. Thank you.
Marilyn McDonald, three minutes, and then after Karen Butler.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the school board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I want to start on a positive note concerning our superintendent by saying he appears to be a very kind man and certainly has done well in refraining himself from anger when being challenged and criticized, and I appreciate that very much. It's just that our views and opinions of what is best for our students is very different at this time. My husband and I attended our district town hall meeting, District 5, Tate High School, with our superintendent and our school board member last week. During the meeting, it was emphasized strongly that safety was the number-one priority of the Escambia County School Board in administration. I so agree that having good security and protection for our students is of utmost importance, especially in this day in which we live. However, I am baffled that our superintendent and the majority of our school board members seem to only be concerned with one aspect of our children's safety. What about their mental and moral well-being? What about protecting them from gender confusion, pornography, and the strong woke agenda of the left that has been allowed to infiltrate our schools here in Escambia County? Is this aspect of their safety important to you as well? If our superintendent, along with the school board, genuinely care about our students the way you say you do, you would be concerned not only for the physical safety of our children, but also for their mental and moral well-being. By constantly promoting and exposing our children to materials on gender confusion, pornography, critical race theory, and more, through their school Chromebooks, eBooks, teachers' instructional libraries, and the school libraries, it would certainly appear that our children's safety is not very high on the list. When our District 5 school board member was asked at last week's town hall meeting if he was open to replacing our superintendent, he said he believed that he deserved more time to prove himself. For the record, our present school superintendent was actually sworn in in September of 2020. That will be three years come this September. I believe he's been given ample time to prove himself. Many of us don't understand why he won't make firm decisions and take care of things quickly when it's in his power to do so. One of the topics that we've already mentioned that continues to come up is unacceptable books and materials issue. This was brought to his attention first back in May of last year with well-documented evidence. We need a school superintendent who will move on with things and not keep passing the buck. The school book challenge was passed on to the school board to deal with, and now the responsibility has been given to the individual school principals and school media specialists. We need a strong, secure leader at the helm of Escambia County schools that will bravely represent our conservative county. We are setting our children and families up for failure with the standards of morality that have been allowed to be put in place in our Escambia County public schools. Isn't it time to wake up and realize we've gone way too far down the wrong track? We need a new engine and a new track. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Karen Butler. She has six minutes. Darrellin Butler. Okay, thank you. And then will be Skip Butler after her.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. We've referred a lot to the new law, so let me read from the new law. It says, "Each district school board is responsible for the content of all instructional materials and any other materials used in a classroom, made available in a school or classroom library, or included on a reading list, whether adopted and purchased from the state adopted instructional materials list, adopted and purchased through a district instructional materials program under Statute 1006.283, or otherwise purchased or made available." It also says this, "Any material used in a classroom, made available in a school or classroom library, or included on a reading list," notice the "or," not "and," "contains content which, (1) is pornographic or prohibited under Statute 847.012; (2) depicts or describes sexual conduct as defined in Statute 847.001, unless it is a sex education class, which it talks about in detail; (3) is not suited to student needs and their ability to comprehend the material presented, or is inappropriate for the grade level and age group for which the material is used." It is very specific. This law is very detailed. It does go into effect on July 1st. Let me remind you again that it says, "The school board is responsible for everything." That includes not only instructional materials, but also the materials in the libraries. Now, in case you want to, because the point was made last week that shouldn't the materials in the library correspond with what is allowed to be taught in the classroom. So if you want to know what is allowed to be taught in the classroom, first of all, there is a definition in the law of sex, and it says this. "Sex means the classification of a person as either female or male based on the organization of the body of such person for a specific reproductive role as indicated by the person's sex chromosomes, naturally occurring sex hormones, and internal and external genitalia present at birth." If you want to know what instruction you may give a student concerning sexual education, it also addresses that, which is supposed to be ninth through 12th grade only. If I can find it. Here we go. Says, "A, classify males and females as provided in Statute 1000.21, and teach that biological males impregnate biological females by fertilizing the female egg with male sperm, that the female then gestates the offspring, and that these reproductive roles are binary, stable, and unchangeable. B, teach abstinence from sexual activity outside of marriage as the expected standard for all school-age students while teaching the benefits of a monogamous heterosexual marriage. C, emphasize that abstinence from sexual activity is a certain way to avoid out-of-wedlock pregnancy, sexually transmitted diseases, including AIDS, and other associated health problems. D, teach that each student has the power to control personal behavior and encourage students to base actions on reasoning, self-esteem, and respect for others. E, provide instruction and material that is appropriate for the grade and age of the student." So if you want the contents of the library for which you are responsible to match the curriculum, that is the statute. Now, two quick observations. One is, we have teachers and media specialists who have refused to do what you have already voted to do. What happens when it's the law and you're responsible? Number two, I'd like to point out, they said that we can make it so that these online resources have guidelines where you can't pull up unwanted things. But let me remind you that the third grader who went online on AR books typed in, it was either family or siblings. I can't remember which. was either family or siblings, I can't remember which, and the book that came up was transsexual. So what in the world, what kind of guidelines are you going to put in place so that they know, oh, if they put in family, we're not going to do transsexual? Let me just remind you again, July 1st, you are responsible.
Thank you, ma'am. Skip Butler, and then will be William Tinker.
Gentlemen, Madam Board Member, how long are we going to let this debacle, how long are we going to let this, this free fall continue? It's pretty evident that the majority of what's spoken from, from this podium is discarded. What you can't discard is what the DOE Board says. After that total undressing this morning, there should be a wake-up call. Was and is horrendously embarrassing, but what's worse than that, we still got kids don't even know where they're going to school this year. And why is that? Because you keep kicking the can down the road, won't make a decision. I.e., last Friday's meeting, when the topic was library inventory and what reading materials available online, Mr. Adams emphatically stated his opinion that it need to be addressed now, nipped in the bud, consistency. And even asked Madam Attorney on more than one occasion, can we poll the board to see if there's a consensus? Chairman spoke up, agreed, clearly stated his position, and then we got crickets. Crickets. That mode of operation is why we're in the situation with Warrington right now. That same mode, that, that's why. So when we, if we continue to enable the same leadership and support the same leadership, we're going to get the same thing? It's not going to get better, it's going to get worse. When we hear members of State Board of Education tell our superintendent on more than one occasion that he is either disingenuous or incompetent, well, you pick which one, but either one's unacceptable. And it's time for a change. It's time for a change now, going forward. By the way, Carl Madison, one in seven, three years in a row, he wouldn't have got to stick around.
Thanks, Sir. William Tinker. Williams, our last speaker in the public forum. We do have three other speakers who want to speak to agenda items, and we'll let them speak at that time.
First of all, I want to say thank you for your service. I appreciate that you're a public servant and you want the best for the children. I do appreciate the lady who spoke just prior to the last minute, and I think she laid it out pretty well. I want to encourage you as a school board, and I know this is your desire, you know, to focus on the basic core elements of education, math, science, literature, history, civics, music, you probably could throw in a few others there. And if we're focused on that and we're not allowing this other issue, which is really happening across the country right now, you, are you keeping up with the news? There are school boards right now that are being addressed all over the country because there's been a push in our country for political and social reasons to change our culture. And there, and if you keep up with the news, you understand that's what's happening. So I want to encourage you not to let yourself or the children of our school district be pawns in that movement. We all want kids to be responsible, to, to learn and to do well and to be prepared for adulthood. I know that's all of our desire. But it's long been known that when you sexualize a child, it, it disrupts their academic learning. It really messes them up because they become focused on their hormones and not on learning. And this has been known for hundreds of years, if not thousands. So I want to encourage you, follow the law, and I would say, go above the law and, and stick to a higher standard because these are our children that we're talking about. This is our community. And when you have a social disorder that is happening all across our country right now, we don't want to encourage. There are, you may know this, you may not know this, there are many children who are reaching adulthood who have been encouraged in this transgenderism lie, and now they're regretting it. And they've had body parts removed, and they've been chemically castrated, and there are books and other things that kids get, get involved in seeing, both in the culture and, and possibly in school. I know there was a book recently that y'all dealt with that is encouraging something that, that really is, it's a, it's a novation, it is a new thing, it is not something that, that is, has the test of time. We're destroying our culture, and it's starting, unfortunately, even in our schools. These issues need to be addressed by parents and not by well-meaning people in the schools.
Thank you, sir. That concludes the public forum. Mr. Superintendent, I would like to propose that we move the administrative appointments forward before we get into the others.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Number five, moving to administrative appointments, is there a motion? Of, of Mr. Superintendent, what is your?
Yes, thank you. We will recommend for Shaney Ducker and Denny Wilson to be appointed this evening.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion to approve Superintendent's recommendations.
Second the motion.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you, sir. Going to introduce, sir.
Yes, indeed, thank you. We have Shaney Ducker, who has been Coordinator of Budget Analysis and Reporting, move to the Coordinator of Grants Management. Ms. Ducker.
Congratulations.
Superintendent Smith and members of the board, I am excited to be here this evening and want to start with thanking my current and former mentors. It is because of their leadership and guidance that I'm standing in front of you today. Nine years ago, I was hired as a student intern in the district's internal auditing department. In less than a year, I was hired as a full-time financial analyst in the budgeting department. Since then, I've held several titles within the budgeting department with my main role specializing in federal grants. With that, I've had the privilege of working with some amazing people across the district and have seen the benefits of federal funds firsthand. The past nine years have been very rewarding, and it brings joy to my heart to be part of the district-wide effort to help our students succeed. They are, after all, our future. Before I close, I want to say a special thank you to Mr. St. Seer for his leadership, guidance, and unwavering support. Thank you to Ms. Kathy Branch, my current director, my former director, Ms. McCants, for everything that she taught me, and the rest of the budgeting department. I'm so honored and blessed to be part of such amazing team and district. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Denny Wilson, who currently is the principal at Warrington Middle School, who will be moving into the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you to the school board and Dr. Smith and Deputy Payne. I, I love what I do. I love the Escambia County School District, and I love the people who work beside me fighting the good fight. Every student, every day, whatever it takes. Warrington Middle School got beat up again this morning by individuals who have no idea what they're really talking about. I would put these missionaries that serve the students of Warrington up against any teachers in the state. My last two years at Warrington have been challenging, but also some of the most rewarding. I would not have survived without the dream team, my two gifted assistant principals, Adrian Green and Travis Griffin. I love you guys. Twenty-seven years ago, Ruth Gordon was the first principal to take a chance and hire me at Ferry Pass Elementary. Ruth, thank you for seeing leadership qualities in me that I didn't see in myself and pushed me to get my educational leadership degree. I'll never forget the way you took care of me and Gina when Gina was diagnosed with breast cancer. You showed me that a school really can be an extended family. I'm doubly blessed to have two mentors that have kept me on the right path. Marsha Allen, and she's sitting with my family because she's family, Marsha Allen gave me my first administrative position. My first experience at MacArthur was an open house. I watched every single student and almost every adult stop and give her a hug. I remember thinking to myself, "That's how I want to be when I grow up and become a principal." Thank you, my friend, for helping me grow up. Mr. Marcanio, Steve, the boss, is just one of the best guys that I know. He leads by example, he's always professional, he has the ability to get the best out of his team. He works until the job is done. He has never been afraid to schedule a meeting. It took me a minute, but I like to take credit for getting him to rethink scheduling Friday afternoon meetings. So CNI directors, you're welcome. This quote by John Quincy Adams hangs in my office, and I believe it sums up Mr. Marcanio well. "If your actions inspires others to dream more, learn more, do more, and become more, you are a leader." Thank you for your support and your encouragement and your friendship. Thank you to the faculty and staff of Oak Crest Elementary School for allowing me to make mistakes and to get it right a few times. The amazing people I worked with those eight years will always have a special place in my heart. I'm almost done. I'm going to ask my family to stand, including Marsha. They're, they're eighty-six years young, but they, I may have missed a birthday since we started this, so we've been in here a while, but thank you for staying until I got up here. Mom and dad, you both have, in unique ways, taught me and my brothers that true success is found in serving others first. You, you have also taught us who and whose we are. I have three brothers, and my oldest brother Kelp is here tonight. Thank you, brother, for always having your younger brother's back. I've also been blessed with the greatest mother-in-law, her support and encouragement are unending. I love this quote by Jim Carrey, "Behind every great man is a woman rolling her eyes." Over the last thirty years, I have had a former Woodham Titan cheerleader cheering me through all the ups and downs. I have no illusions that without the support and encouragement of my best friend, I would not be here this evening. Gina, thank you, I love you. So thank you for the opportunity to serve the district that has been and continues to be such a blessing to me. I appreciate the chance to work with the other assistant superintendents, the deputy superintendent, to support the vision of the superintendent and the board. I look forward to working with the talented directors, specialists, and others that make up the curriculum and instruction departments. Over the last two years, I have been reminded firsthand how vital the support provided by all the different departments from CNI, finance, HR, and operations are for our students to be successful. I will continue to lead CNI, as it's been led for many years, with a servant heart. Thank you again, and go Rockets.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, for us moving that so that some people can exit if they feel free or want to. Moving to unfinished business, there are two items that were postponed.
Minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumping way ahead, I apologize. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes. First, item A, April 3rd minutes, have a motion?
Move to approve the minutes of April 3rd.
Second the motion.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Next, item B, April 13th, special workshop minutes, can I have a motion?
Move the adoption of April...
Thank you, Mr. Clayton.
I second that.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Item C, April 13th, special meeting minutes.
I move the April 13th special meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hightower. Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Item D, April 14th, minutes.
Move the adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Clayton.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. And last, item E, April 18th, minutes.
Move the adoption.
Thank you, Ms. Hightower.
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to the unfinished business, there are two items that were postponed from Friday, A 12th, and two that have been previously discussed. It's been recommended that we handle them in the current order due to the fact that if items A and B pass, then items C and D may not be necessary. All right. First, item A, the performance-based charter agreement between the school board and Renaissance Charter School. Mr. Superintendent, what is your recommendation?
Recommendation is to approve the charter agreement and move the adoption of the su-
And move the adoption of the superintendent's recommendation.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. We have two speakers to this item, and I will address that they speak at this point. Ursula Chiara?
Thank you, Chair. I want to speak out against this motion because instead of supporting private businesses, such as charter schools, what we should be doing is strengthening our public schools, hiring more teachers, guidance counselors, et cetera, investing in our students, not allowing charter schools, charter school administrators to put money in their own pockets. There's a problem, there's a fundamental problem with charter schools as relates to our public education system because the private sphere is one in which comprehensive protections that we are supposed to be provided are not always applicable. For instance, there are different rights and privileges that private institutions have which public ones do not. In order to fully provide equity and constitutional rights and coverage of civil rights protections to our students, we should make our public school system better rather than boosting these charter schools for their civil rights and protections. I went to a charter school. In high school, my parents enrolled me at New Point High School. We were sold a bill of goods. This school was supposed to help me with my autism and to allow me an opportunity to develop skills in technology. But at this school, it was the exact opposite of the experience in that there was not comprehensive services provided for me developmentally, which I needed, I had different needs than a lot of students. And we did not have an opportunity to do things like learn how to program computers or how networking systems works, which would have greatly aided me in that time in my interest and developed lifelong skills. So I would say, let's not, let's not, let's not take any more chances with charter schools. We need to invest in our students and our public schools because that's the best way to provide them with all of their rights and with equity. We need to, we need to invest in our public education. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker on this is Lucinda Martin.
Good evening, everyone. I am Cindy Martin, and I'm a concerned citizen of Escambia County, and I advocate for children. I'm fully disgusted with the Commission of Education in Tallahassee. They don't even know our children. And I know he's gonna say, what you're gonna say, that they gave us ample time to fix the problem. It's important for everyone to know that the superintendent and his board has done everything in their power to fix this problem. They, you guys inherited this problem. It was here way before you got here. Congratulations. I'm trying to fix it. How can a state entity come in Escambia County and dictate what we should and shouldn't do? It's bad enough that our children have been pushed around and shuffled like a deck of cards. Children in District 3 are bused throughout Escambia County. We only have one middle school, and that's Brown Barge. So we need more middle schools that'll help fix some of the problem. District 3 encompasses an area of nine mile road, and it goes all the way down to South Main Street. That's twenty-one minute drive, and that's with no traffic, hardly any traffic. Our children and our schools are Bailey and Workman. The teachers are not prepared for this cultural change. We're gonna have a plethora of issues who include more disciplinary problems. It's gonna put a bigger roadblock to increasing parental involvement. As a citizen of this community, I have worked with these children. I feel this process is unfair to the children. This is a community issue, and we are here today to voice our opinion so we can fix this problem. The restraints and dictatorship are placing barriers to county children and citizens of this community. We need the Department of Education to untie our hands so we can make the decision we know that will fix the problem. This is pitiful, and I just can't believe that we even have to go through this. I work with children throughout the community, and they're calling me because they're missing a bus or their parents don't have cars. Ms. Cindy, I need a ride. They're calling other members of the community and leaders of the community. And I just don't think it's fair that they have to be bused. Why don't we have a middle school in District 3? I'm gonna keep asking. I want you guys to make a plan to get a middle school in District 3, and they won't have these problems. They have to go wake up early in the morning and catch the bus. It's just not fair that you got other kids that just walk to school, and the parents can walk to school, and, you know, they can't be involved in extracurricular activities because the parents might not have a car. You know, they don't have money to Uber, and they don't always have transportation for somebody to pick them up. So I want you guys to make a plan to put a middle school in District 3 because they only have one, and that's Brown Barge. Please, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That's the last of our speakers on that topic, on that item.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
It's my understanding that Mr. Bennett submitted a speaker form for public forum?
He did, and he spoke first in public forum.
No, that was Ellison Bennett, Rob Bennett.
Rob Bennett has 38A. SRO Agreement, Chapter 7 of the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook and Code of Conduct. Special problem or issue, okay? If you want to speak now, sir, you could speak now.
Well, I don't, I don't think we should interrupt an item.
Okay.
We are in the middle of something, but I did want to make sure...
We finish this item, we'll come back and let you have your time. When it has an item number on it, that's what we were going by. Okay, board members. The motion is to accept the contract with Renaissance Charter. Mr. Adams?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I was a little stunned this morning watching that, what happened before the Board of Education. As a matter of fact, when I heard things had changed for the zoning and everything, I started wondering if I missed something because all I had was the agreement that was sent to me on May 5th. Matter of fact, the commissioner sent his other document to find us out of compliance on the same day. So I asked Elizabeth to print this thing, print out what they're talking about, and it's got the same clause, it's got same everything on there. And superintendent said he didn't know the ten minutes before the meeting, what he told me on the phone. I heard in the meeting, so I'm saying it was last Friday. But I'm a little irritated because we need to know first before they get up in front of somebody like that at the Board of Education to let us know, because I was kind of agreeing with the board members there that were saying, hey, you should have had that emergency meeting. Friday afternoon, evening, Saturday, Sunday. So I gave in and gave them the 200-student thing per grade to make 600, okay, on the other proposal, and then they counter-proposed back with this. And it looks like to me, we're just going back... I don't have the other documents compared. Some of the stuff I'm looking at tonight is how it differs from the original proposal we gave them, you know, but I, like I said, I was just stunned to watch what transpired this morning because I knew of no changes that happened. And I'm telling you right now, until I can look at the email she says she has that shows they will comply with it and all that, I may have to vote no tonight unless we decide to come in here tomorrow and have an emergency meeting so I can have time to compare to make sure what I'm seeing is there. Because I didn't know there was even, that we're going back to this till you, till y'all had your meeting with the Board of Education. So I'll tell the members of Board of Education, yeah, I was just as confused as they were. And I'm not too sure what I'm gonna do.
Mr. Superintendent, you want to speak? All right, I'm sorry. If they're, okay. I'd like to interrupt and ask the attorney. Do you have a copy of what's the, the actual proposal that has been agreed upon by Renaissance Charter?
I do, and I did forward this when this was, this was received by me from the Renaissance, or actually from Charter Schools USA's attorney, but Renaissance's attorney was copied on it with a notation that this was the copy of the agreement that was approved unanimously by the Renaissance Board. That was dated May 5th. I did send an email to all of the board members with a copy of that. I sent both the redlined copy as well as the clean copy with an explanation as to what the specific changes were and what the implications of those changes also were.
That is correct.
And so...
Okay, Mr. Williams?
As I said in the last board meeting, I based my vote on what's best for students at Warrington Middle School. And being a former administrator, if you're not ready in May for August, you're not ready. I have no idea how Renaissance might be, can turn things around very quickly. But I want to do what's best for those kids in Warrington. And I'm sitting here thinking, you know, that I heard the conversation this morning from the state. We fail kids and we quit on kids. And I don't want to quit on Warrington Middle School kids. In the classroom, I was a math teacher. I might have to reteach a kid ten times. Renaissance, whoever this morning said, we failed them for ten years. I'm willing to go ten more years and try. I can't vote for this because we, again, I'm gonna say, we didn't fail those kids. And for Renaissance to come in and say they're gonna be ready in August, I highly doubt that. I wish we had more time. I wish I had more time. But I can't give up on our kids. I think we have a plan in place to better serve them for a year and come back and revisit this later. So I would not be voting for this agreement.
Who else? Ms. Hightower?
I appreciate the comments from my fellow board members. I, I remember the document that we received, and as I recall the conversation, on Friday, our attorney had reached out to Charter USA for clarification on a particular issue about the zoning and had not received any communication at that point. So I think that... Yeah, I feel like I have read the document that we are now about to decide about. I too was... I really hurt today. We have never equivocated on the fact that we have not been successful at Warrington Middle School. But it is not because the people that work there, the people have given their blood, sweat, and tears to work with those students. It's not because they didn't try. It is not because we're incompetent. And I think that when Miss Montgomery talked about empathy and respect, you know, there are some adults in this world that could learn from that statement. I really have struggled and prayed to try to figure out what's the best thing to do. Charter schools are public schools. Some of the things that they're asking for in this agreement are not our normal charter school request. But at the same time, after hearing from the Attendance Zone Committee about the hardships that would be imposed on the parents with their children being so far from home, I am willing to give Charter USA a chance, and so I will be voting to support this agreement.
Clayton?
At our meeting on Friday, we discussed what it would look like not having a school in Warrington. Because everything that I'm hearing, there will not be one if Charter School USA doesn't run it next year. I am not willing to relocate 276 students from Warrington to Workman when Workman is not ready for them. And I'm not willing to relocate 298 students from Warrington to Bailey because they're not used to it. They're not ready for them. I'm not sure they can have staffing. I'm not sure they have the rooms. Committee, the report says, oh, we can find the rooms. I'm sorry. Listening to the discussion that was... The discussion with the department, the school board, the state school board, and the commissioner. My immediate reaction was I would rather have those kids working with Charter School USA than whatever the state school board or the Commissioner of Education or the DOE decides to do with them. At least they would be in their home school. They would be in walls that they recognize, places that they've been, and they would be working for the future. Now, that's two grade levels. Remember, one grade level's never been there. Boy, they're gonna really be lost. I'm very concerned about the sixth grade. The sixth grade has never been in middle school. And now we're going to tell them that we're not only going to send them halfway across the county, we're gonna split them up from the neighborhood. The people that they probably went to school with last year. So I have rationalized with my own thoughts is this is the best thing at the moment for the students at, in the Warrington zone. Is to let this group get together, let them start doing their work, and move in that direction immediately. We've been given 48 hours. That's why I'm saying let's give it to them because we have tried for ten years or longer. And if they think they can do a better job, but at least we'll put the kids back in that school building.
Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first thing I'd like to share is a message to the administrators, the support personnel, the teachers, the students, the parents and families at Warrington Middle School this very day who are students and engaged in that school. It's very difficult to hear state leadership say some of the things that were said. That has an impact on people who work there, who are committed there, who are part of the fabric of that school. And so I want our team, our families, our students, our employees, our, our people of Warrington Middle School to know that we appreciate them. We thank them for the work. We thank our students for being students at Warrington. We thank our families for being families at Warrington. And I'm sorry that they have to hear that message repeatedly because I know it's painful to just hear that type of, that type of communication directed at not only our school but our district. So I just want to thank our Warrington... So I just want to thank our Warrington people, from families to employees to leadership. I think the other thing is, when we look at this timeline, I think it's meritus to review what's taken place in May. On May 1st, you as a board voted to move the charter agreement and the lease agreement forward. Four days later, on May 5th, a Friday, we received the response that had three significant items, one less item in the lease, that were redline replies. I will tell you what concerned me more than anything in that reply was the language added to the zoning section. And it was not clear what the impact, what the intent was by Charter Schools USA. So, and I want to thank Ms. Odom for reaching out to get clarification for that. She received this response. It still was not clear. So clarity was sought. That was a major issue because from the very first day that this whole initiative came up, holding the zone for Warrington Middle School students was the core concept of this entire initiative. Because if that doesn't happen, then we're really talking about a traditional charter school. We would have to rezone the school anyway. So that was, that was a huge issue. And that, what is on this, this agenda item, and Ms. Odom, correct me if I'm wrong, is the same reply from May 5th. "We simply have now clarity on that the 200 students guaranteed to be Warrington Middle School's zone students for 6th grade, 200 for 7th grade, and 200 for 8th grade is unchanged," according to that language. The response was, "That does not take away that guarantee." That's a huge, huge issue because that, again, defines that we have the zone students at Warrington Middle School will be assigned to that, to that school, up to 600 students. And currently, it's around 550, the enrollment. So that's where we're at right now. And that's, that's the language on those documents. I think the reality is, this is a very difficult situation, certainly. It has not been easy. And we need to, there, we need to determine what's gonna happen with our students and their assignment. I am very concerned about having students bussed to the two middle schools that we've identified. Having been a principal, as a high school principal, I actually experienced something in this arena where students from another high school across town were bussed to our school because of a opportunity scholars transfer program. That is not easy for high school students. A lot of the students said, "Yeah, I'm here because my, my mom made me come." Because my mom was thinking, you know, great opportunity and so forth. But the students, there were many reluctant students. Becomes challenging, what do you do with after-school activities? You've got students coming into a completely new environment. Often, it looked like the kids would almost, well, they would gravitate to each other because they don't know anybody. They don't know the staff. They don't know the community. They don't know fellow students. Now, those were high school students. Not an easy transition. What we're talking about is middle school students. And I think we saw what happened a year and a half ago when a vast number of staff members at Warrington Middle School were changed, as we were required to do. The first nine weeks of that school year were downright chaotic. Our students had no grounding. They didn't know, they didn't know who was who in their school. When you're dealing with middle school students, and I've worked in middle schools for many years. I've been the principal of two middle schools, spanning 11 years. I taught middle school students. I was a dean in the middle school. Middle school students perform best with, with solid policies and procedures, structure, and consistency. And I'm gonna tell you, that's going to be in huge jeopardy. The other thing we have to think about is not just the Warrington students, but we also think, need to think about the Bailey Middle School students and the Workman Middle School students. Because their school, when, when you have a large influx of people, it's kind of hard to predict exactly how that's gonna pan out, but it is a change. Cafeteria's a little bit more full. Parent pickup is a little bit more busy. There's new people we need to get to know. There's different, there's just a lot of differences. We know when population densities increase, there, there's impacts there. So we have to think of that broad picture. There are a lot of dynamics here. And I, for these reasons, I think, and I've been very consistent with this, this whole time. I think our best option for our kids is to have the charter school go in and have students attend school in their neighborhood. Which is why I bring that recommendation.
Yes, Mr. Williams?
I just want to be clear, to make sure that I'm clear and that the public and everyone else is clear, what we agreeing to. And if I'm not saying it right, please correct me. Seven-year agreement, where for 15-year renewal. Zone kids versus matriculating kids that live in, now it's a competitive. Zone kids versus kids who might come to Warrington Middle School.
So, so for the first three years, it will remain a zone school dedicated exclusively to the students who live in the Warrington zone. For the next three years. After the third year, they, there will be guaranteed 200 spots at each grade level for students who live in the Warrington zone. Warrington students will still have enrollment preference over anybody else except for students that are matriculating up from, if Charter Schools US, or I'm sorry, Renaissance, if Renaissance has, that, once they get around to having 5th grade, they don't know that they are going to immediately launch with a full K-5 program. But once they get a 5th grade class, then those students who are matriculating up from 5th grade into 6th grade are the only kids who would have priority over kids who live in the Warrington zone.
Okay, and also discretionary mileage, 100% after the second year?
Yes.
And none of our other charter schools are receiving that?
No. They will be entitled to receive it on a, on a graded scale over the next five years.
And we have to encumber the administrative fee?
Yes.
All right, I've not spoken. You did go through all the points. The big sticking point was the zone, and keeping the zone, keeping the kids there. I had been, I have been very open about my feelings about keeping Warrington Middle School open. I have, I have acquired great disdain for the business practices of Charter Schools USA with their quote negotiating. If I tear up, I want people to know, I only cry when I get angry. So run. But, but I might tear up different. First, first time that my wife has ever told me when I got home from something that she was embarrassed and ashamed. And that was after listening to the state board and the commissioner chastise us as if we were not even little kids, because I wouldn't talk to a little kid that way. Bullies, thugs. The commissioner showed himself to be a very unreasonable, a very unprofessional man. The state board showed themselves to be nothing but a bunch of magpies, repeating what they've been told to say. And I, I took this morning and did not say a word at the advice of the attorney, who said, "Mr. Fedsco, do not do this. Don't get people all upset. Don't make them more angry. Because we have to have a long-term relationship with the Department of Education. We have 11 other schools that are in turnaround status. They will be here. We do not need them to come in and be more harsh to the schools that are still remaining in turnaround status. And we don't need them to be any more vindictive than they have already shown." I have, at one point in my career, I had the utmost respect for the Department of Education. Betty Castor, some others, way back in the 90s especially, were, were people who, when the DOE came to help, they did come to help. And they treated everyone as professionals. That has changed. It's very unlike that at this point. We have had every trick that could be used against us in this whole negotiation. We've been told what to do. We've been treated unprofessionally. I would rather, I don't know what I'd rather do. I'm ashamed to be in a situation that I have to, I have to work with a group of people who I do not trust as far as I could throw them. Now, I say that, and I say that I want to separate people from the problem. My problem was with the people that we've had to deal with. Charter Schools USA, the attorney, the leadership on that, the Department of Education leadership, the commissioners. That wasn't leadership. The commissioners, rantings, whatever. So the problem is, what do we do that's best for students? That's where I'm concerned, okay? These others, I fiercely have said on and on, separate the problem from the person. Don't make it personal. Don't turn it into something you cannot control or you can't do anything about. But what can we do for the students? Last week, I made comments about a Plan B. What are we gonna do as a school district to make sure that our students never get put into this kind of situation again? And that's the number one thing that we need to do and we need to have driving us. We can't fix yesterday. Yesterday's gone. But we can make sure tomorrow is better. And if we do not lead ourselves out of this, then shame on us. Because we cannot depend upon the Department of Education. We cannot depend upon the commissioner. We cannot depend upon Charter Schools USA or Renaissance to lead us out of anything. But we can depend on ourselves. My comment about the people, the administrators in this building earlier stands. This group of professionals can do anything that we take a mind to doing. Can we take over and continue doing Warrington Middle School ourselves? No, not this year. We cannot do it. DOE and the chancellor, the commissioner, the chancellor have all said, "You will not operate a school there. You will not do anything." I heard Pastor Davis, Marcel Davis, talk about the issues that are gonna come up if we combine groups of kids together and we do this at the Workman and Bailey sites. That made the hairs on the back of my neck stand up. We do not need to create a situation where we have riotous behavior or the potential for fights, chaos, distractions. We need to stop being distracted. We need to make sure we are educating. I look out here at Bea Coleman and I will cry if I'll continue to look because my heart breaks with the decision that I have to make in the rock and the hard place that I've been put between. I hate it. I would, if, if there was anything I could move heaven and earth to do, to do something different, I would have already done it or make a recommendation. All I could say is, we need to leave students at Workman, at Warrington Middle School for at least a year. And then we need to build a system of K-8s or something that will cause our students to stay with us, to not choice into a charter, to not leave what's going on, and show that we can educate our own and we don't need somebody being pushed upon us, okay? The rhetoric, the, not rhetoric. The, the disingenuous stuff that was said this morning by people who were in authority. It was disingenuous to say, "You picked Charter's USA." If there's only one person standing there you don't pick. You're, you are given and that's it. That is not a picking or a solution. A top plan, turnaround option plan? There is no option. Every time we had an option, it has been taken away. The idea that, that some of those people would sit there and say, "It's your fault that the kids are in the shape they are." I've used my analogy, and it's the one that's seen, people seem to understand. Warrington Middle School is our car. The DOE and the state board put us in the backseat and they took on driving it. They drove it into a tree and it's our fault that it's a wreck. Well, that's garbage. That is just pure garbage. There, the things that want to come up, I know better than to say. I don't want to be censored for my choice in language. But I, I am inflamed over the position that we're in. I regret with all my heart that I will have to vote in favor of this. And I do it for the kids. And then I, I make the challenge to this school district, "Get up and do what we can do to make things better and never put ourselves into a position like this again." I will, I will stop. I've ran it. I've carried on. I've said what I need to say. I do not believe there was any sincerity in anything said on that conference call this morning from Tallahassee. It was, it was a kangaroo court at best. And so, yeah, we're, we're held, our, I used a different analogy, which is even worse. And I don't want to offend people. The DOE and the chancellor, or the commissioner, have their foot upon our throats. And I don't want to end up like somebody else newsworthy that happened that they've never removed the foot from the throat. And that's not to us. It's not to me personally. It's to our kids. Our kids. Because, you know, the thing about people said, "Well, you're gonna lose your salary." I don't care. That salary is meaningless if these students aren't getting what they need. And that's why I'm, I'm here. I didn't, didn't come back to, to serve myself to money. I did, I came back to serve this school district and the kids and the personnel and the people who've given their hearts and souls, sweat and tears and everything. As I look out in this audience, I, I see them. Mr. Wilson, Bea, others who were here earlier. I do not want to offend you with this, but, but that's where I'm gonna go at this moment.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Adams? And I want to tell you, beautiful speech. I agree with you. We can't sit around in the south end of this county anymore and let what's going on go on. So I look forward to those meetings when we talk about what is our vision and our strategic plan for the future for some, to keep the kids in our, especially our middle schools. I want to turn back to my board attorney because my whole deal has been on the zone attendance. And I see they got that clause back in there again, they put, "However, such priorities shall not supersede the right of any student of the school matriculating into and through the middle school grades, regardless of where the matriculating student resides." And you got an email stating, that, so what do you... And you got an email stating, that, so what do you think the reason why they had to not vote on the package that we gave them?
They, they wanted...
And send back to us?
I, i- in, in full transparency, the language that we added, they agreed to hold the 200.
Right.
And we inserted language that said, "Beyond the 200, the zone students would still have priority." They did not agree to that language.
Right.
That was something that we approved without, which I knew they were going to object to, but it was something that, that we left in because it preserved the zone for the students. This was their response because if they are going to build a middle school, they want to make sure that the students that attend have the ability to go from, if, if they do expand to a high school. One of the conversations that I had with their attorney was, you know, well, they have a growth plan that's written in the contract. They said, "It's very unlikely that it's gonna fall, it's gonna be full K five by this year, that they may start with a K two to begin with." So, it may be even more years before we are even dealing with fifth graders matriculating up into sixth grade. But that was language that they inserted so that if they've got a student population that has come through the school, they will have the ability to attend through the entire program. I, I think the reality of it is that with the 200 students, we are probably going to be seeing, the kids enrolling in the school are likely to be the younger siblings of the 200 in the middle school grades. And if they're there in the middle school grades, they are guaranteed a spot all the way through.
Okay. Because what you're talking about is when we put the zone preference on page nine at the bottom.
Yep.
Then they came with this clause.
And they agreed to that.
On this side, yeah.
And, and then this, the next sentence was the one that we put in there that they had not agreed to.
Right.
And then that was the last one that they inserted.
But in your opinion, this here does not conflict over here. They're not gonna be able to use...
No, because if you look, if you look, it uses different phrases. One is talking about zone preference, the other, and that, that's where it says, "The 200 will be protected." And then the next sentence speaks about priority, beyond, and, and read, it says, "Beyond the 200, that zone, uh, priority will be given to the students that live in the zone." And then it says, "However, such priority." The words link up.
And you have that email and you're gonna save it and archive it and have it ready when they...
I, I've confirmed it with their, with their attorney.
Well, Mr. Superintendent, as much as I dislike it, because I think this, what I said the other day on Rick Alston's show, this probably should have been a charter agreement for a six, seven, and eighth, but then they wanted to have the, the, the pipeline coming up, I guess we'd say. So, then we agreed to, to do the K eight. And now they came with K eight to high school. And...
Is school still in?
The high school is, the high school is still in, but again, what they indicated to me is that the likelihood of a high school even happening within the first term is, they, what they have indicated to me is they need to get in there. They need, their first priority is to stabilize the middle school, is to get in for the next three years and serve the zone students at Warrington. When they see what the interest is, when they see what the enrollment is, they will start making decisions about their expansion plan. What they have shared with me is the reason they wanted to go with the K eight model is for the same reason that we're advocating for K eight models elsewhere in the district. It's, it's a more stable educational program for students across the board. That was the reason they wanted to do that. They wanted to make sure that they had a natural feeder pattern of students coming into the middle school program. And then as far as high school, where, and again, this is what has been reported to me. What, what they, what they shared with me was, um, they want to make sure that, that they did say that they wanted to have a focus on workforce readiness. It's my understanding that was based on conversations that they had with several community groups. I don't know who. But it is my understanding that what they decided was that if we get the kids to eighth grade and we have the ability to offer them something, then why wouldn't we want to keep them and offer something to tho, to the, those kids who have been with them perhaps since kindergarten?
Thank you for that information and, you know, that was my hangup, was whether those kids would be kicked to the curb. And so, it looks like that was addressed. I, I agree with my fellow board members. It, it would be a tremendous hit to, to Bailey and Workman, especially when that, both those schools had a C or, yeah, so they're at, they're at a C and the, and that could just push Workman right back down and Bailey into a turnaround. And so, I tell you, well, anybody that thinks that the Board of Education will take it easy on us because we agreed to this or anything, they'll come just as hard on the other ones. We, we've got to get ahead of this, uh, this situation. With that, Chair, Chair, I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Hightower, you put your light on and turned it off. You done? Seeing no further discussion, please vote.
Motion carries four one.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Next, item B, lease agreement between the School Board and Renaissance Charter School. Mr. Superintendent, what's your recommendation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Recommend that the lease agreement between the School Board and Renaissance Charter is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion. We approve the superintendent's recommendation.
Motion.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Chair, oh, go ahead, David.
No, I'd just like to, I'd like for the lease agreement to be explained. Is it thirty years but one dollar?
It is. But i- in the event the school ceases to function for any reason, the lease automatically terminates as well.
And...
Yes, sir.
And that was my question, if in three years or seven years, I don't know which way it is now with, with what's going on, but they do not make that C, then the school reverts back to the school district, correct?
The assurances that have been made to me by the Department of Education
If they fail it, and love it.
Is that if, if they do not make a C within the first three years, they will be held to the same accountability standards as any other school. That they have, they have two years to make a C, but if they are close, if they are just on the verge and they need one more year, the DOE may extend them for a third year. But what I have been assured is that if they have not made a C by the third year, that the department will recommend its closure.
And the facility reverts back to us with this lease agreement?
Well, there's no reversion. It's ours.
Okay.
But the lease would be canceled.
Okay. That, well, that's what I meant, if they try to put something else there. Thank you.
Anyone else? This is essentially the same lease agreement we agreed to the first time around.
The only change, and this was detailed in the email that I sent to you guys when I explained the differences between the two, was that they had struck, we had included some language in there that said that if they are doing any construction, which they have assured me is unlikely to happen within the first seven years, that we had inserted some language that said, said they would be responsible for reimbursing us for the cost of permits and our staff time used to help them with facilities planning. And consistent with their wish to not pay the administrative fees, that was taken out as well.
The other discussion?
Motion carries four one.
All right, our next item, C, the turnaround option plan, I guess it becomes irrelevant.
These next two items were brought forward on a motion to postpone to tonight. I believe that the superintendent has the ability, if he so desires, to withdraw those recommendations unless the board has some concerns about that. I do believe they're rendered moot.
I am prepared to pull those two items, item C and D.
All right.
Unless there are any concerns.
I'm good with that. I guess they're pulled. Administrative appointments is done. Proposed additions, revisions, first reading. This brings us to proposed additions, revisions for a first reading. The only item is B, modifications, change...
Mr. Chair, before we move on, Mr. Bennett was...
I'm sorry, yeah.
Had...
Mr. Bennett.
Wanted to speak at public forum.
Right. Thank you for reminding me. Mr. Bennett?
Item thirty-eight, eight on the agenda is an easy approval for the school guardian trading, training contract with the Escambia County Sheriff's Office. The second introductory in the document spells out the guardian program may exist through Florida Statute 1006, Section 12. This section is titled Safe School Officers at Each Public School. It defines school resource officers, a school safety officer, a school guardian, and a school security guard. If it is paramount to name this statute in the guardian program agreement, then it should stand to do the same with the school resource officer agreement between the same two entities. I implore you to have the board, and I implore you to have board council put this statute in the SRO agreement with the sheriff and the PPD. Why would they, as law enforcement entities, have any issue with abiding by the law? Seems simple. Why do I keep talking to you regarding the same as, item as I did last year? I've been very open with my intentions and copied staff and plenty, on plenty of emails to show my thoughts on this matter. It's because I believe in responsibility of a person to do is right, especially when you have written or even legal guidelines to follow. I would and should expect that all of the elected persons and public servants that work for the citizens of Escambia County, I should expect that of them as well. Of the three principals at my child's school and one administrative dean who stood in the doorway when my child was questioned by an armed SRO, questioned about an off-campus event outside of the sheriff or SRO's normal investigative boundaries, we weren't called until hours later by the SRO. Then the school administrators called us later. Three of those individuals now work at district staff. They got promoted to district staff. Not one person, to my knowledge or review of personal records, has had even a note in their file about following this policy in this specific instance. Why? What's to keep other employees from not abiding by the same policy when they know that nothing has happened in the past? Why aren't the new changes of Chapter Seven of the new Code of Conduct enough? First, there's still no standard documentation for staff to record attempted call, calling of the parent. Board council is working on it. Secondly, based on the SRO that told me directly that he didn't have to follow the core, the current R and R handbook, the R and R handbook that we all know by now by per, public record request as part of the school board policy, when interviewing students referenced in the SRO agreement. Interviewing students by school board policy has been the only item listed as duties for both parties, the school board and the sheriff's office. So, we, there's no reason not to put this statute in there. I'm not gonna read the Part B that gives you the support of the SROs to actually follow school board policy. When staff and council opine that the SROs don't work for them, it's only half true. You pay for their training per the SRO agreement. Put the statute in the agreement, back yourselves up, and let me go bother the county administrators and the sheriff's deputies. The superintendents and board council might be intrigued by the last Escambia County Sheriff's Office public records request I did return to me on 5/11 about procedure and policy when interviewing students. And the October email that they gave to me, which I provided you in November, was not part of their records to follow.
I'm gonna move us to the proposed additions, revisions. The only item, B, modifications, changes, and deletions of school attendance zone boundaries. Is there a motion?
Move to approve, what, move to advertise, sorry.
Second the motion.
All right, it's moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Where, where will the, I know that we will advertise this, but will the boundary be posted in other locations for public to view?
Graphics of before and afters will be posted at all four of the affected schools. They will also be posted here in the public spaces of the Hall Center, the McDaniel Center. There is a link that is, that will be going active effective tomorrow morning that also has those available to the general public, available through our website.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
There's nothing, I, no items, thank you, sir. No items requiring public hearing. Consent agenda. The next item is the approval consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Any items to be pulled?
Uh, yes. Mr. Fedsco, item seventeen, C. I'm abstaining from voting on this item due to I'm a board member at Community Action Program.
And I also need to pull seventeen, E, because that item pertains to the Early Learning Coalition in which I am a board member. The other items under curriculum. Human resources. And operations. Seeing none, and knowing that we discussed everything at length during a workshop, at this point, with the exception of seventeen, C, and seventeen, E, we have a motion to accept. We've had the motion to, and the seconded, please vote. Yeah, we're, we are voting on the consent agenda, except pulling those two items. So, you're not voting for those items. Yeah, you vote for everything.
Oh, you can vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Chairman, I move the passing of, moving the item seventeen, D.
C.
I'll second.
Okay.
C.
Seventeen, C.
C, C, all right.
Any discussion on seventeen, C? Seeing none, those except for Mr. Williams can vote.
Motion carries four zero.
Brings us to seventeen, E.
Mr. Chair, I'll move seventeen, E. Second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, everyone can vote.
Motion carries four zero.
So, all the speakers have gone. Down to items from the board. Item A, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, superintendent evaluation. Is there a motion?
Will we accept the evaluation for this year, twenty-two, twenty-three?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the superintendent's evaluation? Seeing none, we'll vote on the eval, accepting the evaluation.
Motion carries five zero.
With that having happened, I did not want to talk about specifics... of the evaluation, but I need to make a motion to, I'm making a motion to terminate the superintendent's contract as of May thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-three and asking Mr. Leonard to step in as an interim superintendent until we could go through a process to recruit.
I've made the motion. I'll second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. I would like to nominate Dr. Michael Roberts.
Well, we have-
There's been a motion and a second. There would need to be an amendment.
Motion is made and seconded. Yes, Ms. Hightower.
I realize that the evaluations showed there were various areas that Superintendent Smith needs some improvement in. I had a very good conversation with him as we discussed the evaluation. I believe that it is, as we do with our own staff, when you identify areas of need for improvement, we put a plan together to determine how we would evaluate whether those improvements were made. I. At this time, I am not able to support your motion. I believe that Superintendent Smith is leading the district. He is working to improve our student performance. I know that all of us may not operate our leadership skills in the same way. I know we've heard from public about they think that the superintendent should have just unilaterally just thrown all the books out. We, the board, as was pointed out to us, have that as our responsibility, not the superintendent. And I think that as we move forward, I would hope that your Plan B, the things that we've discussed in our evaluation, will make us better tomorrow. I believe that Dr. Smith has looked at our district and he has determined where our weaknesses are. And he is putting things in place to hopefully grow those weaknesses into strengths. With all of the turmoil that was created through this Warrington issue, all of the turmoil, and I know we've heard people state that what's happening in our legislature is exactly what needs to happen, but there are things that have been put in place to start July one that are going to cause turmoil in our district. We're going to have to help our teachers understand the implications of the legislature, legislation that has been passed. We're going to have to fight through our budgetary issues. And I believe that having someone in place who has been working in those areas is important at this particular junction.
Mr. Adams?
Yeah, I, um, this is tough. I was department finished for thirty-eight years. And if we didn't get somebody straightened out pretty soon, we moved on, okay? And one of my problems I have been preaching to him is in my evals. And it started back with that when we first started negotiating. I asked him to either put me or Paul Fesco in those meetings on that negotiation. I attended the invite from Senator Broxton to come there with the stakeholders and all the other people in there. And he was told to pass down information to each board members. And I made a comment at that meeting. I can't talk to the other board members to let them know this stuff. It did not take me long when we had the next meeting to figure out none of y'all had a clue to what we were getting ready to talk to at that meeting. So his problem of communicating with the board, plus like this book situation we're on, I called the employee in and say, let me know. Can you comply with this law? Or your personal feelings are getting in the way. If so, then I'll get somebody else in there. Because we got to comply with law. Instead of figuring out about somebody kissing on the cheek or whatever, we know what books has got to be out of there. The situation at Bellevue Elementary School. We've had assistant principal on paid leave for five months. I don't have assistant principal there, okay? And I told the superintendent it could have been fixed very easy by calling that person in to office and saying, hey, I know you disagree with my decision. If it bothers you too bad, I can move you off to another school. We had a teacher that was threatened that she could lose her teaching certificate because she spoke out. Where I've got teachers at Bellevue Elementary, everywhere, at Buella, all the other different schools. I know y'all do too, that needs teachers, okay? Could have been fixed with a simple visit to that school by a superintendent, talk to the employee. So it just keeps going. And I don't know if this school did. We got huge problems coming down the pipeline. Whether he can execute on them and we're still dealing with all this other issues that it just keeps bleeding on us. And that's my concern. From what I've witnessed as a chair, now Paul's witness, well, he's a chair, is whether he's going to be communicating with staff. One thing I told him is you're in a meeting with DOE and they got all their staff people? You should have your Knights of the Round Table in there with you, okay? You don't go into some situation by yourself. We had another meeting with Senator Broxton. He forgot about the meeting. And I was the only person there for the district with the chancellor and everybody else. So I like Superintendent Smith. He's the nicest guy I ever met. But I love my kids and I love my teachers and I love everybody else. And we need to get out of this little mess we've been in, all these little dramas. So that's where I am right now. We need to stabilize the school district and get it back a little bit. Because we got big problems anyway besides that. But we surely got to get some sense of normalcy back in the school district. But anyway, I don't want to give you my take on it.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. I withdraw my last statement.
All right.
I'll just withdraw it.
Any other discussion? Yes, Mr. Superintendent. Mr. Slaton?
I'm just remarkable that you would throw the district into this type of turmoil at this particular time. We have a lot of experts that want to act like they know how to run a school district. You participated in the hiring. You participated in the research to pick one. But the people sitting out here that work for us, that's where the turmoil is going to be. You don't know exactly how this is going to affect. If I've been through nine superintendents, nothing has ever been smooth. Nothing has ever, every time we change, we have turmoil in the district. We have change of leadership. We have things exchange. This is no time to be doing this. I'm sorry. This is wrong. It's a surprise at the last minute. I'm very disappointed. I almost want to say there's been a sunshine law violation, that there's got to have been a discussion on this. So no, I certainly can't support it. I can't support it for the administrators, the teachers, the students in this Escambia County. It's the wrong time, wrong way to do this.
Just one more statement. And I hear you, Mr. Slaton, but I've taken a pulse of the county and leadership. And we need something. And like I said, I told Dr. Smith I'd be extremely fablet with him. And I told him he's in a tough position. Anybody that came behind somebody that was there for twelve years, it would be a tough transition. And then we have a lot of issues. But our district is hurting. And if you would interview a lot of administrators, they're hurting. Teachers, they're hurting. Nothing personal against Dr. Smith. I think he's a great educator. But we're losing administrators. We're losing teachers. We're losing students. And it's just anybody would be in a tough situation right now being superintendent. And if we really care as a board, then we do what we think is best. It's tough to make that decision. If you're accusing me of sunshine law, I don't speak to any of you. And I don't talk to any of you outside of being in this room. So not on my part. No sunshine law, no violation.
And no sunshine law on my part either. The closing statement the superintendent and I had when we did the one-on-one evaluation, he said, was I going to move to terminate the contract? And I said, yes. But I didn't tell you that or I didn't tell anybody else that. And I didn't need to. And I don't want to go into details. I said to the superintendent, I didn't write everything on that evaluation because I respect him as a person, as an educator. And there are things that I could have put, two pages of things that I have notes that I had. And I don't want to disparage the superintendent. His strengths, in my opinion, are his ability to look at what's happening instructionally in the classroom with the rounding and walking and knowing what expectations are for instruction. That's the strengths. Communication unsatisfactory, just about everything. My, the efforts with this Renaissance Charter Agreement have been horrendous. And there's other things. The pulse of the principals, other people, staff, there is no feeling of that they're being led. They, it's uncomfortable. I can't believe the number of principals that we have lost, people who are going out without even going in to drop. I care about this school district. I voted for the superintendent when he came in. I do not believe it was, I do not believe it's in our best interest to continue with him in that position going forward. Now, I'll just leave it at that. Superintendent?
So, Mr. Fesco, to be clear, when we had our conversation, I was talking about the expiration of the contract that happens next summer, not now. But that doesn't matter. You've made your statement. Certainly, we've had some difficulties. Tighten your seat belts because here it comes. So let's talk about Charter Schools USA. Mr. Fesco, you've been a thorn in the side the whole time. Because you haven't been, you were meeting with people, my understanding, at Warrington Middle School to devise another charter. Is that correct?
No, sir, it's not.
Okay.
No, I had somebody at Warrington Middle School come to me to ask me on how you apply for a charter. And I directed that person to the alternative ed department to say, this is where you get this information. This is what a charter application is. I didn't meet with them to do anything different. I answered questions as I would for anybody here.
Fair enough. I think through this entire process, where we've been on shaky ground is some of your statements that have made have impacted the trust factor from Charter Schools USA. That's my view of it. I think we've had. But as we've spoken, I'm the superintendent, so I am responsible for it all. I am, however, not responsible for you. There's been a correlation between you and Mr. Adams. Think about when a lot of this chaotic, these situations happened. Who were the chairman? But yet we don't take responsibility. It's not your fault. It's not your fault. It's my fault. There's a pattern here. Some people are just dividers. You have been divisive. Both of you have been out. It started within the fall. It continued in February. You've been plotting evidently behind the scenes. You've got people who come and speak. We can go after example after example, the books. Mr. Adams, you sat in that chair and led this board through a process to come up with a policy. We had a conversation with general counsel. Can the superintendent take the books? I don't like the books. As a high school principal, I'd go pull that book. General counsel said, I would not recommend that because that's not in the intent of the law. But you hammer away, oh, the superintendent should pull these books. Why? Because you don't want to deal with it. You get the emails. You get the phone calls. You get the chaos. But yeah, it's easy to throw the superintendent under the bus. It's your policy that you led. And you're asking me to violate your policy. What is that? Mr. Fesco, the other day, I believe you said some laws need to be violated. Because you said the same thing. You wanted me to pull the books. Don't slippery out of this. I don't want to hear it. Don't slippery out of this. I don't need to spin. Yeah? That's true. There's the door too. Yeah, you have your own issues.
Sir, sir, we don't need to. This is between the superintendent and the board. Thank you.
Yeah. Communication, our communication patterns really haven't changed since last year. Same practices. But I'll take your note. Certainly not perfect. Certainly have room to grow. Don't deny that. My own self-evaluation, I marked myself as an unsatisfactory in one of the areas. Don't disagree with that. But your divisiveness, I'm telling you, there's some, there's something bad that exists here. There's something toxic that exists here. You all want to fire me. I think the answer would be for the two of you to resign your positions, really. What's the difference? It's, is it you or me, right? I guess you outnumber me. If you care about the kids, as you have said, we need to do things right. But to undermine and constantly seek to get me out. One of the things that is very troubling, we live in a time where there is divisiveness. Do you ever wonder why the mental health needs of our kindergarteners and our first graders has spiked? You don't wonder about that because you don't know that probably. I've spoken to the principals, who you've implied don't feel I lead them. I'm going to disagree with you on that. Because I've been out in the schools. I've talked with the principals. with the principals, I know what's going on in the schools. But do you know why mental health has spiked? For kindergarteners, first graders, second graders. That's anecdotal, because I talk with the principals. I don't have the answer. But I don't think a divided society where we hide behind our computer screens and we judge everybody, and we speak words of condemnation left and right, is very healthy. There's a lot of toxic stuff going on. How much poison has dripped on that podium over the past six months? It's been extensive, it's, it's been ridiculous, actually. We're about kids, and I'm going to tell you this, I thought it was a miracle, I'm, I'm going to tell you, I watched when I was, when I was selected, I, I watched the process and, I'm going to tell you, I thought it was a miracle. Because I, I didn't think I was going to be selected as the process was progressing. But then it happened. And I really feel that I was called to be here. Now, I don't know how long I was supposed to be called here, obviously not too long. But as I walk out, I, well, if this vote goes the way it appears it's going to go, I will hold my head up high, because I have invested. My wife has been an amazing loyal individual and sacrificed, gave up her dream job in Orlando to do this. And at least I can put my head on the pillow that I said I've, I put everything I could into it. I fear for the future of this district. And I'm just going to say it, I don't think this board, I, I think both of us, if you were to look at ratings on how our community perceives us, me and you, it's not very good. There are problems. But the research says if we're not united, this school, this district will not move forward. And I've said that before on this dais. So I guess this is my swan song, but the one thing I would do want to say is I'm appreciative of the employees of this district. I'm appreciative of our administrators, I'm appreciative of our executive staff, our deputy, of our executive assistant. There's been some stellar people who have been loyal and supportive. And I don't mean to get into the blame game, but I do think you both have been very divisive. And I don't, I think, I think that, there's a correlation here. Maybe it's me, maybe it's you, but there's a correlation. You're in this too. You wear it on your shoulders just as much as I do. And I know you're going to be happy the day I walk out. You've made that perfectly clear. I wish this school district well. It's a good school district, has problems, has challenges. We have an attendance issue, we have challenges with poverty, we have kids who are hurting. I'd like to think that there's, there's a bright future ahead, but I think there's maybe some bumps along the way to get there. So I appreciate the opportunity over the past two and a half years. I wish I had not disappointed you, gave it my best, thank those of you who have been supportive, thank you very much. Appreciate your leadership. And I wish you well. I hope I'm wrong on some accounts, and I wish you the very best.
Other discussion?
I guess you've had conversations with Mr. Leonard? Does it seem like that would be an appropriate thing to find out? You've put him in here as interim superintendent.
Well, I did that because he was the finalist in the last search. He worked at the district level for a long time.
Would you, would you consider an amendment to take that out and have another meeting to discuss who the interim might be?
You made the motion.
Right, I, I would not want to do that at this time. I would want to have something in place so that we'll know what's going on.
Though it's not going to be the feelings of the entire board.
It wasn't when we voted the first time.
Have to vote that way.
I didn't. But I did. I'd made the comment that from the very beginning of our search, Dr. Smith was one of the candidates who was there at the top for me from the very beginning. I said, "One of the candidates."
So I've never been fired before. What do I do, leave?
No, you're still in, still there until May 31st.
If I were you, I would.
Yeah.
But you are here until the 31st.
Unless you choose otherwise, sir, but I, I thought that, I've never learned what I thought. We still have items left on the agenda. Disciplinary reassignments, first item A, disciplinary reassignment. Mr. Superintendent, what's your recommendation?
Move the superintendent's recommendation.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Next item B, formal hearing, requests and recommended orders, what's your recommendation or is there a motion?
Ms. Payne, as deputy, you need to call the votes, please.
Is there a motion? Need a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on the request for here, formal hearing? Seeing none, please vote.
Yeah, expulsions and extended.
Yeah. That's, item B is what I said. Well, in here, saying formal hearings, I'm sorry, yeah. Item B, expulsions and extended suspensions, moved and seconded.
We already up to voting.
Next, item C, formal hearing requests and recommended orders.
We need the vote, we need the vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Item C, formal hearing requests and recommended orders, need a motion?
Move the approval of the superintendent's recommendation.
I second it.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, item 43, employee suspension, is there a motion?
Move to approve the recommendation.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Lastly, item 43B, an agreement for legal services, is there a motion?
I'll move the recommendation.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, ma'am. This concludes our agenda items, ladies and gentlemen. We are adjourned.
Do we don't have, can I ask a question?
Can.
Have you, since you're in charge now, have you made any decisions on who's running graduations?
Well, I had assumed that, that Dr. Smith would still be here until the end of May, and he may decide to do that. If he is...
Who's going to find that out?
Pardon me? I will reach out to him or, um, I'll find out. If he's not, then I will turn to...
Deputy.
The deputy and/or Ms. Morgan on what they might want to do differently with graduations. Anything else?
No, looks like we didn't think this route real well, did we?
I think we thought it through a long, long time. We are adjourned.